Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large counsel Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large counsel Lindsay McLemore, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Welcome to the August 26th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We will call it to order. We've got a full agenda. We've got a full house. It's nice to see so many amazing young folks as they are so excited to get their school year kicked off. So that's... Now, you're supposed to nod vigorously and say, "That's right." But we are going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that's by asking for God's presence on the proceedings that are conducted here. And I'm going to ask Reverend Grace Burton Edwards from St. Thomas Episcopal to come forward. Grace, if you'd hit that light, I'll get it for you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
In honor of the Labor Day weekend this weekend, I'm going to offer a couple of prayers from our Episcopal Church tradition that have to do with work and workers. So let us pray. Almighty God, you have so linked our lives with one another that all we do affects all other lives. So guide us in the work we do that we may do it not for self alone, but for the common good. And as we seek a proper return for our own labor, make us mindful of the rightful aspirations of other workers and arouse our concern for those who are out of work, for those who work in harsh conditions, and for those whose work does not support an abundant life. We pray particularly for public safety and military workers. Guard and bless all who work for the well-being and safety of our community and nation. Grant courage, vigilance, and skill to those who rise up by night or by day at our urgent call that they may always find your arm mighty to save. We pray also for those whom you have called to the study and practice of health and healing and the prevention of diseases and pain. Give them wisdom that through their work, the health of our community may be advanced and your creation glorified. And finally, we pray for those who serve and govern the people of this community, especially the leaders in this room. Send upon them wisdom, charity, and justice that they may foster the well-being of all creation and all of our community. All this we ask for the sake of your love for us all. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all so much for your work for us.
Grace, thank you so much for all the work of St. Thomas. Y'all do an incredible job. We appreciate it. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge of the flag.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a motion second to approve the minutes from the July 8th meeting. Any edits or any comments on those minutes? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, they are approved. We've got a proclamation that is going to be read into the record by Counselor Toya Tucker. It deals with attendance awareness month.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Ms. Eccles is not able to attend, so can the principals come up? And anybody that's supporting, that's in the coalition as well, you can come up and stand behind the principals if you're here. I don't see anybody. Okay. You too.
Good afternoon. My name is Tanya Lindsay. I'm the Program Manager of School Social Work Services of Muskogee County School District.
Good afternoon. My name is Danae Muhammad. I'm one of the school district's school social workers from Muskogee County School District.
I'm Jackie Mupar. I'm the proud principal at Winston Arts Academy.
All right. Well, Ms. Eccles has been working on this for quite some time, and I appreciate her. She's an amazing social worker within our school systems, and we're going to have an amazing month. So I'm going to go ahead and read. And first of all, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
I'm going to read this into the record. Whereas, education is a fundamental pillar of the Columbus community, and the Columbus Consolidated Government proudly recognizes the critical role the Muskogee County School District plays in fostering student success, academic achievement, and long-term opportunity for all children. And whereas, chronic absenteeism is defined as missing more than 10% of school days, and it has more than doubled in communities across the country, which disrupts the classrooms and impacts students' academic process, social development, and overall well-being. And whereas, effective solutions to absenteeism require a comprehensive, community-driven approach that emphasizes prevention, early intervention, and positive relationships rather than punitive measures and reflects the lived experiences of families across Columbus and Muskogee County. And whereas, improving student attendance depends on meaningful collaboration between schools, families, civic leaders, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and local government to address barriers and support student engagement. And whereas, a strong culture of showing up and caring must be cultivated throughout our city by amplifying community-wide messaging on the value of daily attendance, promoting consistent student support, and encouraging local partners to contribute solutions. And whereas, students are more likely to attend school regularly when they feel safe, supported, and engaged in a welcoming environment that promotes emotional well-being, belonging, and academic relevance. And whereas, the Columbus Consolidated Government remains committed to working in partnership with the Muskogee County School District and community stakeholders to promote regular school attendance and educational equity and build a future where every student is empowered to learn, grow, and thrive. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Attendance Awareness Month.
Tucker, make any comments?
Yes. On behalf of Dr. David Lewis, our school superintendent, as well as Mr. Patrick Knopf, Chief of Student Service Officer, and Dr. Chakila Nelson, Director of Counseling and School Social Work Services. It does take the entire community, as well as school district, teachers, students, to play a part in this vital role of student attendance. The state of Georgia has really beginning to... Well, they've always been addressing attendance, but now they're looking at chronic absenteeism, which deals with excused absences, unexcused absences, and suspensions. As we all know, if our students are not in the classroom, they're not learning, and therefore, our teachers cannot be as effective as they need to be. So I thank you for this council for taking the time to recognize September as being Attendance Awareness Month. Muskogee County School District is preparing for various activities throughout the district, for our students, for our teachers, and as well as our community. Thank you.
We certainly want to thank the Muskogee County and the Harris County School District for taking on this tough issue. We thank you. If you would come around, let us say thanks, and I'll hand you your proclamation.
Before... I wanted to recognize Ms. Shawna Love in the back. And I'm not sure who else that was... That's on that Coalition Committee. It's not a lot of us. This was my charge to do the proclamation because Ms. Eccles made sure that I've had the information to pull the data and get the wording correctly. But this was my charge. But Ms. Shawna Love is actually a part of this as well as the community partner. So I just wanted to recognize her.
Very good. Thank you. Ladies, come on around.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right. Next on the agenda is to administer the oath of office to our young people who have been nominated to serve on the Youth Advisory Council. I know our deputy city manager, Lisa Goodwin, has been incredibly involved in this as an advisor. And so I'm going to ask her if she wants to say a few words. And while... Once she finishes, we're going to ask all the students to kind of come up here and gather in the well, facing outwards for pictures for Mom and Dad if you want some. But we'll be able to administer the oath when they come forward.
Mayor, thank you for that. And we are excited to begin this new year for our Youth Advisory Council. And as I talk, I'm going to ask the advisors to go ahead and have the Youth Advisory to come on up, and they can start circling. I do want to first recognize Lucille Chowery. If you can just come on up. She is the president this year of the Youth Advisory Council. She was the past president-elect last year. So this is her first year coming in as this. Mayor, we have put over 1,200 students through this council since 1999, and it's still going strong. And we want to thank the parents for continuously coming out and being a part of this Youth Advisory Council. So we're excited for the start of this new year. You all kind of come on in. Let's make several rows in between. Bring them on in. We want everybody up. Left in. That's right. You all come up in front of the podium. Get in front of these. I'm going to ask these... We can't see the taller ones in the back. These two are kind of short. Yeah. Girls, guys, come back. Let the... Yeah, they're a little short. Okay. Do we have everybody in? Y'all squeeze in because we want to get everyone in. It's a good-looking group.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, make sure you can be seen. Otherwise, we're going to bring you all back here next week. You have to... Do want to say thanks to the parents who have obviously raised these young people in a manner in which they value service back to their community and their schools. So thank you all for your role in this. Now, all you young people, if you would, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. I'm going to read through this, and I will acknowledge at the time when you need to signify that you agree with the statement. I, a Youth Advisory Coalition nominee, do swear that I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia, and that I will faithfully and impartially demean myself as a member of the Youth Advisory Council during my continuance in office, that I will discharge my duties to the very best of my ability, that I will do so agreeably with the laws of the United States of America, the state of Georgia, and the Charter of Columbus, Georgia. If so, and you agree to this charge, please signify by stating, "I will." Very good. Congratulations. You are now members of the Youth Advisory Council. Mayor... City Manager, do you want to introduce the other...
Yes, I'd also like to introduce the advisors. Have each of them to come up. And these are the young ladies and young men who work with them each year. So if you all will just kind of let them know who you are. One at a time.
Good afternoon. I'm Tia Sha Hollis, Director of Communications.
Good afternoon. My name is Cameron Calhoun. I am Deputy City Manager, Lisa Goodwin's Admin Assistant.
Good afternoon. My name is Brittany Louse. I'm the City Manager's Office Chief of Staff.
Hi. My name is Kristi George, and I'm one of the program specialists for the city.
Hello. My name is Danielle Frazier. I'm the Director of 3-1-1.
I'm Michael King, Director of CCGTV. Save the best for last.
And I will charge you with one last thing. Take this very, very seriously because we have things that have been constructed and policies in place because of the Youth Advisory Council. So they have left their mark on the city, which means they've left their mark on the citizens of this community. We expect no less from you. Congratulations. All right. We'll let the advisors lead the way, and you guys are going to get to sign your oath downstairs in the break room.
All right. Congratulations.
Yeah, we'll give them a few minutes to get out. I think it's a little unrealistic to expect them to tiptoe out of here. Yep. All right. We'll go ahead and get back to business here. Next up on the... That was a great way to open the meeting, though, see all those young people. They do so many great things throughout the school and really throughout the community. And this gives them an opportunity to kind of learn and to identify ways that they can make their mark in the city of Columbus. Tonight is the night when we go through the recommendations made by the Board of Crime Prevention. These are the grants that are being allocated. And we will ask our director, Seth Brown, to come on to the podium. And we'll give them just a few minutes to get in. I imagine most of these folks are still swapping spots there. Okay. Let's do this. This way they get in here because there are some poles. And then we'll do that. Josh, can you go signal me when the last folks are coming in, if you don't mind? Yeah, oh yeah. Well, this... All of these folks. And as soon as they're done, they'll probably disappear as well. Yep. But it's... Well, I thought that was it. All right. If we could get you to take your seats quietly, please. We'll go ahead and call up Director of Crime Prevention Seth Brown. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go ahead. If nobody has any objections, I wanted to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the crime prevention grants that have been presented, and then ask Seth to walk through each one individually. So we can... Unless you have one you want to pull.
I'll second that.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Counselor Chambers?
Yes. I'm going to have to recuse myself from three.
Okay.
Columbus Technical College, Goodwill of the Southern Rivers, and Lema D'Alton.
All right. Clerk, did you get that? We'll just have those pulled from this particular motion. And then afterwards, then the counselor can recuse himself. Okay. And there's one other... Okay. Counselor Kogle?
I'm going to recuse myself from 25 from Hope Harbor. I serve on the board.
Okay. Do we vote to allow them? I want you to get them all down. Are there... Is there anybody else that needs to be recused from voting on the grants?
For Columbus State.
For Columbus State? All right. Anyone else? All right. So I'm going to lump all of those counselors in one, and we'll say... We'll entertain a motion to approve them recusing themselves for the item stated.
We don't have six without three voting.
Well, we can... That is true. We don't have six. We've got Counselor Huff that's on. He's not... Okay. Well?
Then we'll have to... Let them abstain one at a time, I guess. Right?
Do what now?
Let them abstain one at a time, and then everybody else could vote.
We can do that. So are you abstaining from Technical College as well?
But two people are.
Well, that gives us six. So we got eight here, right?
So let's just... Let's do this. We've got county... We've got Counselor Hickey and Travis. Do what now? Well, why don't we... Okay. Well, we... Do I now? Yeah. But I think that we can do it one at a time, though. So we'll say, first of all, let's take... Do what?
Everyone, they can vote to recuse themselves.
They can.
Yes, sir.
We can do all that. But my point was, if we recuse them all at one time, there's some that are going to be gone and we won't have six to cast a vote.
Mayor, can I bring those back? Come to the next council meeting?
We can approve them tonight. We just need to figure out how we...
No, we want to have six.
I think we'll be fine.
Do we have six?
We can approve them all now.
We could... Well, let's do... All right. Well, let's just do this. Let's do one at a time, recusal, and then... All right. So Counselor Hickey, yours was Columbus Tech.
Travis. Columbus Tech.
Counselor Chambers for Columbus Tech. Okay. Is that all for Columbus Tech? All right. Is there a motion to recuse?
Say.
All right, there is. First and second, recuse Counselors Hickey and Chambers from voting on the Columbus Tech item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So...
May we approve Columbus Tech?
Say.
All right. There's a motion, second, to approve Columbus Technical College's grant. Any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then we had... Who else do we have?
Goodwill Industries, number 24.
That's okay. And Goodwill Industries, that's a... Motion, and second, to recuse Counselor Chambers from voting on that item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
May we approve Goodwill Industries, item 24.
Motion, second, to approve Goodwill Industries... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to allow Counselor Kogle to recuse from Hope Harbor.
Second.
Motion, second, to allow Counselor Kogle from voting on the Hope Harbor grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve the Hope Harbor...
Second.
Motion, and second, to approve the Hope Harbor grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Those are approved.
Now I move the rest of them to be approved.
One more, 35.
35.
Travis, number 35.
35. To allow Counselor Chambers to recuse from Lema D'Alton. Second.
All right. Motion, second, to approve recusal of Counselor Chambers for number 35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve the Lema D'Alton grant.
Second.
Motion to approve item 35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's approved.
Now I move the rest of the balance of them to be approved.
Say.
Unless you have... Unless you're involved anymore.
All right, so there's a motion to remove the remaining, to move the remaining items on the list. All right, any others that need to be pulled? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, let's go through, in case there's any explanations or questions that we need to answer.
You just want me to read them off the list, Mayor?
Yeah, and just, I mean, you can give just a quick mention of what each one is for.
Okay.
I think that's, I think it's good for the public to see where it's going and what type of program is.
And, and Mayor, the descriptions that I sent out to council after they're approved today will be on our website, as well as videos that correlate with the programs, also with the directors responding, so. All right, first one is Better Work Columbus, which is a job creation program that operates out of several facilities in town. Right now, they're at Victory Mission for 15,000. Boy Scouts of America for 20,000. They will be doing a recruitment part toward the south and the east side of Columbus to recruit those that are not as accessible as other programming. Boys to Men, 10,000, which is a mentoring after-school program, also Study Help. Building Towards Wellness, Community Coalitions, which is a...
Excuse me, just a moment. Counselor Crabbe had a question, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make a statement for the record, because it appears as though we voted on something that we didn't know anything about. The committee and Director Seth Brown has sent us emails, he's sent us videos. And so we've all been reviewing these for a couple weeks now. So we, we did not make that vote uninformed.
Thank you.
Continue, sir. Building Towards Wellness, which is a program that educates leaders within our community, churches, educators, counselors about sex trafficking. Put my glasses back on. Children First, which is an after-school mentoring program, also working with STEAM for 5,000. Clement Arts, which is a program that connects foster families and the children with resources throughout our city. Columbus Community Center, which is an after-school daycare program with tutoring and homework help. Columbus Community Orchestra is a, is just what it says. It's a community orchestra that operates here within Columbus that includes young children and adults for 5,000. Columbus Dream Center, which is a after-school help as well as a food closet and clothing closet program for 15,000. Columbus Scholars, which is a tutoring, study, homework help program, SAT, ACT prep program. Columbus Symphony Orchestra is, is the Making Music Matters program, which is an after-school program that deals with kids. It also operates in Open Door and some other facilities. Columbus Technical College is a program that operates within our prison system that educates current prisoners that will be released shortly, welding skills, carpentry, that kind of stuff. Quarter, which is an after-school and a summer program that teaches homework help as well as tennis. East Carver Heights is a soccer program down in the Boxwood Rec Center. That one's 30,000. I forgot to tell you, Quarter was 20,000, I'm sorry. Enrichment Services is gonna be a program that will deal with trauma-related incidents within children that have seen violence in their lives. It's for 20,000. Faith is a program that, it has multifaceted aspects to it, but it's, it's a mentoring tutoring program also that's after-school. As you can tell, a lot of these are mentoring, community-type programs. Flourishing Ladies is a program that deals with females within the school system that are either on the bubble to be removed from the school system or actually be incarcerated. It is a very intense program that also pairs up with Second Chance. That program for $50,000. Focus Program is an after-school program that is a, as well as homework help. It's also a chess program and basketball, but the kids, the carrot is to play basketball, but they have to finish their homework and get all their assignments right before they can actually play. Friends of Claflin is also an after-school system as far as educating kids and helping with homework. Girls Inc. is an after-school program for girls only, which deals with career planning, college prep, that kind of stuff. Let's see, Goodwill Industries is the Bridge program, but there's also a, we funded Bridge in the past, but this is a little bit different. It's the Bridge program with a job creation program that's kind of tacked into it. Hope Harbor is a community education program that educates those to spot the violence that is directed towards women and their, their partners or families. Let's see. Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity is an after-school mentoring program for 15,000. Let's see, Kingdom Sports is a program that will occur within Wilson Apartments. It spun off of True Springs, but they're not connected to each other. And it will be a program where this gentleman and his wife have gone into Wilson Apartments to create basketball teams. Let's Grow Steam Expo is a program that educates our middle and high school students about career opportunities as well as college opportunities. And it's a, it used to be a one-day event, but now it's a year-long event, as far as research goes. That's 5,000. Let's Grow Steam, the River City Race Program is 5,000, and that is a program that deals with STEM and also works with kids to build their own cars. And then they have the race over there by Columbus High. Some of y'all have probably been to it. Literacy Alliance for $20,000 is a kindergarten readiness program, adult reading program, as well as juvenile reading program. Micah's Promise for 15,000 is a program that works with, works against sex trafficking. And while I've got y'all on that mark, if you'll notice, there's three that we've got in here. A lot of people don't realize that Atlanta is the hub for sex trafficking. It literally is the hotspot. And so we see a lot of that here, and that's why you've got some of these programs that we are funding, because we're seeing the crime here. And I, and I see Counselor shaking his head, you're probably well aware, Counselor Hickey. Moscow County Juvenile Court is a, a program that'll deal with kids within the court system. Those will all be referred by Judge Kennon, people that he has come in contact with within his court. That'll be a mentoring homework, also counseling, therapy kind of thing. That one's for 20,000. Neighborhood Focus on African-American Youth occurs in Elizabeth Canny. It's a program that we have been financing. It is an after-school program that deals with the parents as well as the kids for tutoring, mentoring, and homework help and such, but it includes the parents in the process. Office of Dispute Resolution for 15,000 is, it's, a lot of people know it as a legitimation station where they legitimize fathers so they can have rights to their children. Georgia's notorious for that not being very favorable towards fathers who have not been legitimized yet. So that program helps that. Omega Lambda is a mentoring tutoring program. Many of y'all are aware of it. It's, they, they've done a lot of community events that y'all have probably been involved with. $30,000. Open Door Community is an after-school program. We, we fund very little of that, if y'all, the notes that I sent y'all, y'all could tell. It's a very small percentage, but it is a amazing program that occurs at Open Door. Overflow Outreach is mentoring and also the barber program, the sweepers program. We've, we've brought Overflow in here, and many of y'all are familiar with Gerald Wright. It's for 15,000. Right from the start, deals with a multitude of things, like the fatherhood program and also working with kids to understand the boundaries that they should face. That one's 20,000. Second Chance is the male version of Flow, also done by, I call him Coach Flowers, but he's Dr. Flowers. That program has, we have seen tremendous growth out of that program. Dr. Lewis will sing its praises if I have to bring him in here to let y'all know. They do some really great work with kids that are probably gonna be incarcerated if we don't stop the process. Let's see, Services for Humanity is an after-school tutoring program for 20,000. Take the City is a program that deals with women involved in the sex trade industry to reform them, to get them addiction help, to get them counseling. They also have a clothing, it's a closet, but they call it, there's a name for it, I'm drawing a blank. But they kind of get them all the help they need to get out of that world. True Springs is the, is the, this job placement program that happens over on the, off of Second Avenue. Turnaround Columbus is, is the garden program that we have funded for years that Mr. Buckner does. That one's 20,000. Urban League of River Valley is a, a program focused on job creation as well as dealing with kids and mentoring. Voices of the Valley is a new program they've created that'll be operating out of Spencer High that helps kids that before could not afford to be part of that chorus. It is an elite chorus that we could not, there were kids that could not participate because of the expense. Voices of the Valley stepped up, and they've created their own satellite that'll actually participate with those that participate within the Swoop Center. Whole Person Ministries is also an after-school mentoring program for 20,000. Wright Fitness is an after-school homework slash boxing program. He's actually had some of the kids that we've sponsored go on to national level. And I don't think Mr. Wright's here tonight, I think he said he couldn't make it. YMCA of Columbus is an after-school programming for kids in school system. Young Life is a graduation assistance program, as well as a program that deals with expectant mothers or current mothers, mentoring and also just kind of getting them through the process. Their graduation rate is, I don't have it with me right now, but it's off the charts compared to the national standard because of the involvement of their mentors. And the last one is the Youth Orchestra of Greater Columbus, very similar to what we're gonna see with Voices of the Valley, but it incorporates going after those kids that probably could not participate in that function. One of the things that we've seen is, we've got the sports programs in Columbus, and we've done really well with those. But what we didn't have was the arts programs were suffering. We started out with the arts programs in the beginning and for, I'm not real sure why, but we started losing those programs. People were participating less as far as the people that were organizing them. We're starting to see that come back, which is, we're excited about because we know what the figures say about kids that perform in the arts programs. And that's the last one, Mayor.
All right, Counselor Anker?
Thank you, Mayor. Seth, thanks for what you do. What I'm gonna say here, I want to say to the audience and to our citizens that I love our groups that are serving. This is not negative, it's positive on your heart. I've spent time with you, I know you, I like you. I like your board. I like our citizens that are, I see board members and active participants and people that serve our community. But, but really, I want to say this for the record, for the future, that we might discuss this, because I brought it up before. Some of the things on here really make me ask a lot of questions. And without asking those questions, I'll just tell you the reasons I asked the questions. You know, last couple of weeks, there was one person that stood at the podium and said that in the case of crime prevention, it's all about, that's all about philanthropy. And I think we have to be very careful with philanthropy with the citizens' money. And I'm saying this to us and council, and I think when we look at different laws that are in the grays, I want us to, to talk about those and say, can we reappropriate that money to different areas that's maybe a little bit less risky? And, you know, we have a lot of money issues, so I don't think a million dollars is a really big deal when it's going to touch the people that need it the most. But when I look at a state clause, I've shared this a little bit. I think we have to, I could read you a small portion of the clause, I kind of want to do that. But I don't, I don't want to open it up and make it a more risky day, but I think we have to have this conversation. There's state laws that talk about philanthropy, that on pro, not making donations specifically states and General Assembly that you cannot grant or donate, you know, in some areas, it calls it gratuities, or given freely without recompensators, and it's calling it essentially a gift. And what, it goes further, and it talks about city funds that have to serve the citizens the value on the money. And I'm not questioning the good that it does, and I don't want anybody to misconstrue my words, but I do think we have to be careful with philanthropy. And, and the other thing is, I just want us to be careful with a growing staff. This fund started back with the OLOS. We do need to be real mindful of making it swell with, we want the money to touch the people. If we are gonna give the money, which we have, we want it to touch the people. And I don't want to see the staff swell that much further. The last comment I would, I would make in terms of maybe solutions to talk about in the future is how we reallocate those monies to different parts. Because when I look down through there and categorize some of what's done, some of them, the questions really go off big. And then some of them look like they're Parks and Recs, some of them look like United Way. And, and some look like the churches should pick up a lot of this. And we know this, we talk about it, and you work with the churches. And so I just, and the school system, a lot of these are, you know, which is all our money and the citizens' money. So I just want to say, when it comes to state law, federal law, and there's some gray areas there as well. And I just want us as a council, as this comes back around, to determine, you know, this money's gonna go out there because we have to serve our citizens, but they have to get the return on the money. And I get a lot of questions. And it's hard to talk about these things in the big setting with a lot of people who are affected from it. These are good people that we're reaching, there's good people who are serving, and we're trying to do the right thing. But we can't do all things for all people at all times, and we have to start asking harder questions. And 46 recipients, is that correct, for the million?
I think it's 47, actually.
Forty-seven.
Fifty. Yeah.
So thanks for...
Well, that's, it starts with three and goes down, or four and goes down, so it's actually 47.
I, I hope I made my point that, that we would continue dialogue as a council about maybe the number, maybe how, how the money's appropriated, and maybe we check the gray zones. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. So thank you.
Mayor, I would like to, at least, my board is here, I won't name all of them, but, you know, if, Danny, if you wanted to speak on anything. Basically, this whole room, I would probably say, is the recipients of this program. And so we're, I'm fortunate to stand here. I, all I do is make sure the money gets spent right. The board is the one that selects everything. They spend months going over these applications, asking the questions, getting me to make the phone calls. That, that something may not look right on the application, so then I have to go and have a meeting with those individuals and kind of clear up some order that might look a little muddy. And so I think there's a massive amount of due diligence that goes into these. But we're always looking to do better. I mean, I, I don't think that we're, I'm ever at my best. I think I've got to get to that, and I think it's an ever-evolving, changing target. So, but I'm just, I'm appreciative for, for all that here. And Natarielle, who, she doesn't work for my office, but we hope that she will. She works for the mayor right now. She has helped me tremendously with paperwork. As you were stating, Counselor Anker, we started with 10, I think, applications, and now we're seeing 65, I think, this past time. And the, the amount of contract and resolutions, and then the paperwork that you do after the fact, is pretty significant. So I'm fortunate that she, that the mayor has allowed me to utilize her talents in our office, so.
Counselor Kogle?
Thanks, Seth. Thanks for all that you do. I mean, I think that this, this process this year was so much smoother than it was for the last two or three years. And, and that gives me a lot of confidence in what, in what you're doing. And, and it should give a lot of confidence to the citizens that council was able to even just sit up here and not really have, you know, too much going back and forth like we've had, like we have had in, in the past years. And you and I kind of talked about it over, over this past week. And you made me feel a lot better about how your selection process goes, what some of your, what some of your standards are, and how you streamline this process. The, and the amount of grants that, that we're giving out, we're, we're able to touch a lot of people in our community. I think last year, we had, don't quote me, but I think it was around 25 or 30.
It was in the high 30s, but I can't remember the exact number.
Yeah, and, I mean, and we're, and we're growing, we're growing, and we're able to touch our community every year. I think, and you and I talked about this, this part over the last week. I think what would give council, as well as a lot of the citizens, that peace of mind, and I appreciate your willingness to, to take on, but, take on this request. But I think the last time your department was audited was in 2019, maybe 18?
It was 19.
And, and I, and I am thrilled that, you know, through our conversation, that you are so open to, to, to having that, that conversation and, and letting, letting our, our people come in and just make sure that our eyes are, our eyes are dotted and our Ts are crossed, I was gonna say it the other way, but, but if it pleases council and if, if, if there's six votes, I'd like to make the motion just to go in and audit the Crime Prevention Department, just so that everybody... just so that everybody can kind of be on the same page. Everybody can feel really good about this because this is a good program that we have in, in our city, and, and I think it needs to continue. But I think we just need to make sure that everybody is on the same page, from citizens to, to council to the department, just so that there's no questions. And, and I'm not saying, just to be clear, this is not like auditing the people, the, the recipients. This is just the department. And so I, I know that you've got a lot going on, and I know that the amount of growth that has, has happened. I just, I, I want you to be, I want you to feel like you are being really well-supported with council and, and just make sure that if we're going to continue to bring more grants in, that we're able to do it in a streamlined process, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the motion's second to request an audit on the Crime Prevention Officer. Any comments to that motion? Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to make a suggestion. If we could take this as a referral to keep in line with the process of approving a resolution, I can list it for the very next meeting as being requested by you, if that's okay.
Yeah, totally fine. I think, I mean, we just want it to be on the same page, so.
Yes, ma'am. We'll make sure to list that the very next meeting.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Seth, for all you do. I know that there's a lot of programs in here that, that I see in, in person, and I'm excited to watch them keep going.
Councilor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for, for bringing that up. And that's something that we speak about in regards to the Audit Committee, and I see that our auditor, Donna McGinnis, is in the audience right now. And what I will ask, just so all the councilors can have that information, we have a list showing all the audits that have been conducted within the city, and this need to be shared with the entire council body. That way, we'll know which audits are coming up. And she will have an actual audit plan. Every year is certain departments that she will audit based on the last time they were audited. And we need to have this information. That way, all the council members will know, and we won't continue to kind of go out of order. We'll stay within that order. We can always do follow-up audits, and, and we need to. And that was one of the things that we mentioned. Once you do an audit, in order to ensure that the things that have been put in the audit are being done, you need to do a follow-up. So those are the things that we will, we will do. And I'm just letting you know that once she does your audit, at a six-month timeframe, she'll come back in and check on you and make sure that the things that she has brought forth within that audit is, you know, at least being done or working on, working towards getting it done. I agree with some of the things that's been said. You know, we get a lot of emails, and I'm sure you see the emails. It's all about accountability. It's about transparency. It's about the process that the board does when they make their decisions that come forth to council. One of the things that you did mention before is that, one of the things that you want to start doing is, is metrics. And what I would suggest, and I know that our auditor can help with framing this, but based on what's in the contract, that's your metric system. So whatever it is that that organization said that they're going to do, that's what their measurable outcomes are. And you measure them based on those metrics, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And what it will do is, it's going to provide, and in six months, you come back with that information to see whether or not those organizations, and I know places like the Urban League and Hope Harbor and some of the other ones have this stuff. Some of the smaller ones probably don't. However, they can provide some type of data. But you need, you need to be able to provide those metrics to council. That way, it's for the record, and our citizens can see how their tax dollars are being spent.
Why don't we task the, the director with bringing back an idea on how to make sure that that's done? Because as the director of that, he, he works for the mayor, so we're happy to try to get that information, but we need to allow him to work within the parameter of the board to try to bring that back.
Well, just like she, my colleague over here had been speaking to him, I have too. So these are things that we have been discussing, and we had a phone conversation. And these are things that we have talked about in reference to metrics, and I get that he works for you. However, I'm just bringing it. I got it. I got it.
Where he brings this to council.
I got it. I'm just making it, I'm presenting it because we have been flooded with emails the last two, three weeks about this department and only this department. So just putting it out there.
But that's an annual, I mean, it happens almost every year because it all comes around the same time every year.
Yes, and it, and it does. But in order to communicate this with the public, it needs to be stated that that's something that he has already said he is going to work on. And with the help of our auditor, because she said that she would be willing to help him develop that, just putting it out there for the record that Mr. Seth Brown, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but thank you and thank the board, and it's, I appreciate you. Just, just note that. And thank you for communicating with me and letting me know all the good information that you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Crabbe?
I just want to thank you. I tasked you to involve, you know, the family more, and I see on this list that you have done that. You've.
Yes, ma'am.
There's actually two that's, that's bringing fathers back into the family and focusing on that because I do believe that the foundation of crime prevention is a strong family that has a father in that family. And so bringing back that foundation is essential, and I appreciate your focus on that, and I'd love to see even more.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Chambers?
Yes, and I'll make my comments. It'll be very brief, and I do concur that metrics are very, very important. But I do have one question, and I think you answered it. The people that were not granted or did not receive the funding.
Yes, sir.
How do we, number one, keep them engaged and share with them, you know, maybe gaps or areas of opportunity that they need to, you know, look at doing?
Right.
And, because there's some, a lot of good organizations out there that, that apply. They, they, I mean, they just didn't meet the cut.
Right.
So how do we cascade that to the recipients that did not make it this time and provide them information or let them know what they need to do? You know, because we don't want them to discontinue.
Right.
You know.
Yes, sir.
Applying for the grant.
They are contacted by me with an opportunity to come sit down with me and discuss what the board said, how, why they may have been, you know, cut from the process. You know, some we were cut, excuse me, some were cut this year because they had just been on the rolls for so long we had to make room. And, and they knew that. We, I try to tell them every year, this is not a, a funding process where you're going to get funded every year. We, you know, I've always said, if we fund the same 10 programs every year, we don't move anywhere. We stay at the same level. And this year, we had a lot of really good, brand-new programs that applied. But the ones that were denied, they get a, a statement from me and a letter will go out, but they've already been contacted by me. And they're told that they've been denied funding and if they want to meet with me and discuss it. I've had three to say they wanted to sit down and talk. None have actually, well, one made an appointment. He got sick and he canceled. But the other two have not, even though they said they wanted to, they have not made an appointment with me to, to sit down with it. So what I always do is I try to tell them, okay, you know, here's where you could have done something different that maybe the board would have looked, you know, fond, more fondly on it based on, you know, the numbers or whatever the case is. And it runs the gamut. Sometimes it's just, it's just too expensive. What they're trying to accomplish, we can't do. And then sometimes it just does not feed in, fit in the category of crime prevention. Mike Gammon said years ago, when we first started this, that some people felt like if they could spell crime, then they should get an award. And so the rough part sometimes is telling those individuals, I know you think your idea is just awesome idea, and, and I have to explain to people that these are like their children almost. They vet these ideas. They write them out. They think they're awesome. And then you come in and break their heart and tell them, this really does not fit in the scope of what we're trying to do. So that's, that's been the process. This year, we had to reject more than we ever have, obviously. We had a lot more applications this year. And we just, in some cases, we just don't have enough money, obviously.
And I'll go back to metrics. I mean, that, that's very critical to me because I know there are a lot of organizations. And, you know, I want to be able to, you know, if we allocate funding to this organization over here, well, how many of them, let's just say if it's a mentor program.
Right.
You know, how many of them were able to complete the program and go off to college?
Right.
Or go off to a tech school or, you know.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we have, you know, measurables in place, you know, a GED program. How many kids were able to graduate?
Right.
You know, and be able to track them, you know. I just want to make sure that we do that across, you know, across the board.
Right. And we have, as I think it was Councilor Tucker stated, we have some programs that are, you know, really hardcore data folks that just turn in number after number after number. And then they also turn in what I call the warm fuzzies, obviously, to kind of put the human side to it. The ones that, that we sometimes struggle with are the ones that have never had to do anything like that. It's not that they're incompetent. It's just they've never had to do a, a, a metric system or a data system. So this year, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, for those that don't have it, I'm creating their own, their own tailored metric system that they can follow. So that a way, they won't be as lost. And like I said, it's not because they're not intelligent. It's just they've never had to do it. And so that's kind of how we're going to try to address that this year. Also, so y'all will have a more seamless process of trying to review what's going on with them. I like the idea that you had said in the past about coming in quarterly and talking about the programs. I think we could, might not be able to talk about all of them because there's 40-something, but we could do 15 at a time or 20 at a time to come in and, and highlight some of their things they're doing. Because we have, I mean, I know Councilor Tucker's been, the mayor's been, Councilor Allen's been to the graduations we did at the prison system. You've got 60 guys standing up graduating from this program, and that's just one time. I mean, some of these programs are doing some remarkable things. So I'm going to try to make that a little bit more palatable to y'all as far as reading, so it's not so detailed, so y'all could at least get the gist of what's going on. So.
So let me just say, thank you for.
Yes, sir.
Taking, being the champion of this initiative, and thank you and your board members because this is volunteer work for your board members.
Most definitely.
So if they are here, thank y'all for your tireless hours that you put into this. And I'm just looking to see it continue to grow and I want us to continue to look at best practices.
Yes, sir.
And maybe benchmark what other cities are doing so we can, you know, try to continue to go from good to great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Seth.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, we'll, we'll give them a minute or two, yeah. Asking them to do that quietly is, I ain't pounding on a, not pounding on this tablet. They did better than that. All right, we'll continue on to the next item, next item on the agenda. We need those high schoolers back up here to show folks how to leave quietly. Do I know? Oh, okay. All right, next is the Task Force on Homelessness. Pat Fray, Vice President of United Way. Ben Moser, President of United Way, and I think we've got Kathy Williams on virtually.
Yes, that's correct. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you know, we were here at the last meeting talking about our plan to create a homelessness task force. We're coming back to you today, and we are now calling this group the Homeless Solutions Group. In the last two weeks, we have secured a group leader, Kathy, who is on Zoom with us. Group members have all agreed to participate. We have a bid from a facilitator, and we have a plan for advisory panels to inform the group. We have also decided to shorten the timeline for the study from the originally proposed 12 months to six months, and we'll provide regular updates to council as we move through this, through this process. We also have a budget that we are presenting today for hopeful approval and funding from the city. And then we can move forward on the slides, and I'll show you who we have asked to be a part of this group. From the, oh, we have the slides. I'm sorry.
I was thinking.
There we go. I'll move forward with the slide. From the business sector, we have Orrin Steele, retired from Aflac. Law enforcement and the city government, Sergeant Katrina Williams, Katina Williams, excuse me, real estate developer and former head of the Housing Authority, Lynn Williams. From education and the school system, Patrick Knopf, who is great with data. And then unaccompanied youth, Katie Krieg, the Chair of the Bradley Turner Foundation, has agreed to, to serve in that capacity. I'll turn it over to Pat now to talk about our goals and our timeline, and then a little bit more in-depth discussion about the advisory panels that we would like to bring in to help inform the process of this group. Pat?
Thank you, Ben. And again, Kathy Williams is, has been so gracious to accept leadership of this group, and she is joining us on Zoom. Her apologies. She has a, a family situation, so she couldn't be here live. But yes, trying to develop the actionable steps and plans so we can address the challenges of homelessness in our community. And like Ben said, we, we, we've taken our timeline and squeezed it in to try and get it all, all done and presented to you guys a first report, sort of a quote-unquote halfway there, maybe a little bit more than halfway, right after the first of the year. And then the final report at the beginning of the second quarter of next year. So we're trying to make sure that we're, we're using this time wisely. We're getting, hitting the ground running. We've, we've already started some preliminary work to make sure that we're using our time wisely and our resources wisely. And we want to have active participation in, in having the process and having the plan informed by a whole host of, of subject matter experts and, and groups to, to feed into the thought leaders that will be leading this process to make sure that all aspects of, of life and quality of life in our community is, is, is participate, participating in the plan, whether it's workforce development, housing development, integration, and with our mental health, our substance abuse, our correctional systems and those kinds of things, but also paying particular attention to those with lived experience. We, we want to be informed by those who have lived the process. process. Many of us can say, well, I think, or I, I assume this is, but unless you've been there, you, you truly don't know. So, having those advisory groups and those advisory committees are critical to getting, getting the process underway and getting it accomplished. We're, we're looking at some supportive housing research that is in cooperation with Department of Community Affairs, and looking at how we can leverage our local resources with state and federal resources to bring about some, some opportunities for possible affordable housing, shelters, transitional housing, and some other things. We, we will have a professional facilitator to help keep us on track and keep us moving, and really to, to, to tighten that timeline as much as possible, to get things done, and then just some incidental costs. So, very, very, in, in my opinion, for a, a strategic plan, which, when I look at the research, it took over eighteen months when the city did it last time, and, and, I don't know what it, what it cost in terms of dollars and cents, but to, to take a, a plan that's going to affect and, and, and inform how we move forward for the next three, five, and more years, with real milestones and real objectives and real measurables. We were, you guys were talking about metrics. That's the key to this, is what does success look like? How do we measure it? And if we're not going in the right direction, how do we pivot? So, a, a total cost of just under thirty-four thou, I'm sorry, thirty-five thousand dollars to put all this together and have it to you guys for presentation and approval or implementation in, in the beginning of certain quarter of, of next year. I'll be willing to ask, answer any questions if I can.
So, y'all are asking the city for the thirty?
That's correct, sir. Yes.
Four thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that was, that was our initiative, what we were asked to do when we were here two weeks ago.
Yeah.
To bring back what it was gonna cost.
Are y'all gonna, you, and I know a couple of weeks, we talked about identifying other funders as well, because with cities, we've tried it with the city funding it and trying to keep that money, you know, year after year, that's the challenge.
Right.
So...
That's part, that's all part of-
I kind of thought, I kind of thought that was gonna be coming at the same time this did, when you talk, when you talk about-
That's part of the plan, is how we fund. That's why the supportive housing and all, all of those other things on, how we do, how we carry out the plan, this is just, we, we're having to build the, build the structure right now.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes. Earlier today at three o'clock, NACO did a webinar to address exactly what you're talking about right now. And they're shifting from a housing-first perspective, and I know, you know some of the things in reference to how HUD dollars, and I'm trying to find all these screenshots that I took, because they said they're gonna send a presentation out from that, that webinar. But, one of the, I guess, one of the concerns is, is it's gonna be so much coming down the pipeline, and I think we need to prepare based on what they provided today. And if I could share that?
That would be wonderful.
If we could.
Any information, we are, we are every day combing through, looking at white papers, looking at executive orders, looking at directions that we're getting from DCA, that we're getting from SAMSA, that we're getting from HUD, and honestly, the directions that we're not getting, that we should have had by this time on certain things. And it, and again, being able to have a, have a plan allows you to pivot. If you have a roadmap of where you're trying to get to, then if you have it, have to change course, or there's a, there's a, there's an obstacle, then you know how to get around it. And so, I think that's critical. Yes, ma'am?
And I think, because it's so, it's so much that's about to change based on that webinar, that we, we might need to kind of pivot and slow down and, and bring it back. And only because, one of the things that they mentioned was funding sources. So, they, they mentioned, I mean, it's, it's so much, and I'm up here trying to pull all these different funding sources that they're putting out. There's like seventeen point seven billion dollars right now, that, that they're allocating towards housing and community development programs that we're trying to do right now. One hundred and thirty, that's in, in reference, one hundred and thirty billion in community health systems, some similar to our community care, in reference to our urgent care. But they put out these figures, and it came out quick. I mean, that meeting was today at three o'clock. But it's, it's basically understanding the homelessness, federal shifts, county, it's county impacts and next steps. So, they're providing county leaders with next steps on how to draw down on these funds, and how it's gonna look for you right now with how you get HUD dollars and how you get paid for our Home for Good program. So, they're, they're talking about this, so I'm just asking if we could, if we could kind of, I get, I mean, I hate to say like, pump the brakes a little bit, because we probably have some additional funding sources where we don't have to use city funds, because they just put this out today at three o'clock. Is that something that we could do, sir?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I, I, I think that this amount that they're talking about, I think you, you present, it's, it's to jumpstart it and do exactly what, what you and I were speaking about, is look for those other funders. Look for them through NACO, look for them through some of the grants that are available from HUD. But that, and that's the only reason I asked. I was just curious if this is the, kind of all-in from a, from a prepay sort of deal, where we just go ahead and, and put this in there so that y'all can get those things done?
Yeah. This, this funds the whole six-month study, and we will incorporate all the information that Counselor Tucker is talking about, as well as everything that Pat said, as well as all information brought to us by the advisory panels and anyone else in the community who has a stake in this issue. That's the, that's why we're forming this group, is to coordinate all the information, talk to everyone in the community, and come back with a great plan and some really strong, actionable recommendations on what Columbus and the surrounding area, well, Columbus in this case, and the community organizations, state, federal resources that can be brought to bear on this issue, and look at it from all perspectives, including the business community, and, you know, try and really come up with some strong, actionable solutions that will help us out as we look down the road to what is likely to be a problem that increases over the next six months, year, couple of years, given what we're looking at from the federal side of things, and some of the funding cuts. I've been going around to all of our funded partner agencies with United Way, and I'm hearing a lot of feedback about the potential for funding loss across various, you know, grant resources that have existed for many years, and have really been baked into these organizations, and they're looking at staff cuts. They're looking at, you know, how am I gonna do this programming without, you know, fifty percent or more in some cases of a line item for a specific piece of programming that's been helping people in this community for ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so, really bringing all those folks to the table and coming up with some efficient and effective solutions to this issue.
Okay. Counselor Kogel?
Can you flush out a little bit more what the professional facilitation includes, and who it is, and what they do, and?
Yeah.
That seems, that's a big ticket right there.
It is, yeah. We've, we've gotten a, a proposal on this from CSU, the Leadership Institute. They're Shana Young, and she has worked with us at United Way on many a strategic plan and strategic area at this point. And she was involved, heavily involved with the first plan to end homelessness back twelve years ago, thirteen years ago. So, she has the background knowledge for this. I felt that this was a very reasonable bid for this work, given that we're gonna be meeting once every two weeks, and then in paneling all of these advisory panels for a couple hours each, and she's gonna be involved in the entire process, as well as helping us craft the final report and recommendations back to Council at the end of this. And so, she's gonna put considerable time into this, and I felt that this was a very reasonable fee for that service.
Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that you all had come together twelve years ago. What happened to that plan?
So, we, we worked that pla, I wasn't here, I'll let Pat jump in.
No one that was here in the development of the plan, I don't think is still here. It was started in two thousand nine, it went into effect in November of two thou, it started January of two thousand nine, and it came out of the, the mayor's challenge. It was implemented in November of two thousand and ten. It was supposed to be a ten-year plan that was supposed to be revisited, and, and it never, the city, it was the city's plan. The city implemented the plan, the city advised the plan with advice from, from the community, and, and the, yes, the Leadership Institute did lead the, the discussions, but the, the city never revisited that plan or, or did anything with it.
So, I, I mean, is, is there a place where this plan, where you can put your hands on it right now, that we could have?
Sure, it's, it's still on the city's website, and I'd be glad to, it's a hundred and twenty-seven pages, plan with, with, with suggestions, but no real actionable items, to be frank. And, but I'll be glad to send it to you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. That, well, the, the ask is, is for the thirty-four thousand seven forty-eight to get this study started. And I, you know, I, I think it, it could be a good thing to have that study starting while we're looking into the other options that are coming out of, whether it's NACO, whether it's in, you know, National League of Cities, you know, so, it's, but it's up to this council. It's a, it's just one of the, one of the overriding challenges for, for our, our government right now. Counselor Hickey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Frey, since, since you mentioned that, that there is a plan out there, but it wasn't any actionable components to it, is there any way that, that, that we could just get that plan and give this council a chance enough to, you know, to review it, and see if this is something that we could already, you know, that if it's already been done, that we can take a look at and try to incorporate this into what we're talking about now, and, and moving forward?
I, I'm, yes, sir, I'm sure if that's the, if that's the will of, of the council, is to take the, the plan that was, was based on times and the trends and things that were going on in, in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, absolutely. But I'm, I'm going to say, this all came out of, of the fact that, that when the city has an issue with homelessness or public camping or anything else, they call Home for Good. Home for Good, which has a staff of, of, of three individuals. And so, that's not sustainable from a city perspective. So, the reason for trying to come up with a plan was to come up with a sustainable plan for responding to the needs of the community as, as, in regards to homelessness. But, but we're happy to do whatever pleases the council.
And the, the plan needs to be updated, and that's what this group would do. It was fifteen years ago. Many things have changed over the past fifteen years. We're dealing with a totally different environment, you know, in many ways. And so, we would certainly incorporate all of the lessons learned from that plan and the plan itself into the process to inform this committee. But I, I think we certainly need a, a refresh on that plan, if not a total reworking of that plan.
Counselor Kogel?
Has there been any discussion with any public-private partnerships in this to get it started?
The, to do the study?
Yeah, to get the, kickstart the whole program?
Well, I mean, we're, that, that's what we're seeking today, is, is a, is a partnership.
But has there been any, has there been any outside discussion with any, anybody in the community about, about sharing the cost or, or starting that?
Well, no, there hasn't. On this thirty-four thousand plus that we're asking for today, since this would be the city's plan, we felt good about making this ask to Council today. Certainly, the recommendations that come out of this plan will have cost sharing involved. We're not gonna come back and say, okay, you know, we recommend, you know, a multimillion-dollar plan, and we want the city to pay for it all. It would be many recommendations and ways to pay for those recommendations over a, you know, period of years, I would say.
And, and if I can interject, for the next six months, my work will be working on this plan. So, if we want to talk about private part, partnership, you know, my, my salary and my, my dedication would be directly to this plan for the next six months.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
And I do think that what this plan would do is it would put the local spin on a very huge national challenge, right? Because Columbus is different than, than Albany, it's different than Casita, it's different than Atlanta, it's different than all the other communities. They all have their unique, it has to do with the number of, in some instances, some of the, the number of interstates that go through these communities. Our challenge has not been, I hate to say this, as large as some other communities, because they have multiple inter, interstates running through there. I, I, I think that the ask is, it does make sense, because it allows us to get the base for what Columbus needs, and then take the information from the national organizations and even state organizations to, to try to move it to where it needs to be, given that foundational piece from the city, so. Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, that's all right. Counselor Ch, Counselor Chambers?
So, if we decided to move forward with the plan, where would the funds come from?
That'd be a question for our finance director. Is she?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, it would be reserves, essentially, that we would be utilizing to fund this plan.
Okay. Counselor Kogel?
And I guess this is a question directly for Counselor Tucker. Do you, with the NACO that came out, is that, is there an opportunity to then reimburse if, if it comes down?
I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read some one of the statements. There's so many things changing with this. So, one of the things that was mentioned today, the, the topic was housing first programs could see a significant change, just like Mr. Moser said, requiring treatment, participation as a condition for keeping housing and fun, funding impacts. They're talking about, right now, in reference to our CDBG funds, they're talking about how Home for Good would, would draw down on the, I think, is it eighty thousand dollars that you get? It, it's, they talked about that today. And it's a whole shift. So, it's almost like we're, we're planning, but they haven't put out the NOFA, they haven't put out the guidance, they haven't put, they're, they're developing this information right now. So, we're doing a plan, and the information is not out there yet. So, that's why I'm asking, it seemed like it would make sense to kind of push it back that way. At least if we're tailor, tailoring this, it would go align with what they are going to require of us. Because we will not get anything if it does not align with what the federal guidelines say. And that's what they said today on that call. So, I, you know, that's the only reason why I was asking to kind of push it to the side.
And I, I agree with you. I, I just think that's when we get to the point where you're, we're drawing down that money. I think this is more just sort of a snapshot ten years later.
Well, one of the things that I did appreciate about, and I think that we can do this without the money, is kind of like turning it upside down. And the presentation said, and I'm trying to go back, trying to go to it, where it talks about the different- about the different-- who will inform the process, getting faith leaders involved, homeless service providers. It's similar to what we're doing, Mayor, regarding our childcare supply initiative where we're gathering the data. If we could do data gathering and just kind of have a focus group before we implement this to see, you know, what the concerns are with faith-based leaders and some of these other entities. And that way, we'll have this part. And then, once we get the information with the guidelines-- I mean, the same thing with the American Rescue Plan. We couldn't implement anything until the Treasury guidance came out. It's the same situation. It's just saying, wait until we get, kind of like our marching orders, before we-- it's almost like you're putting the cart before the horse, because they're providing you exactly what-- it's their next steps, what the counties need to do now to plan for this. So it seemed like our plan would align with how we would draw down the funds.
I don't get a vote. So I mean, I think, you know, I understand what you're saying. I think we're talking about two points in time. I think one is when we try to identify that plan of attack, and we find out what the resources are, we go get them. This, to me, looks like a refreshing of a plan that is done locally and then stayed nimble. I mean, it's not etched in stone, but that would be the group in the study that gives us a pathway to try to move forward. I think whatever we do, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, we do, Mayor. But I guess my thing is, if it says develop actionable strategic plan to address our community's homelessness challenges, and this right here is providing you the next steps and how this kind of connects with our funding source and our next steps, it seems like we would want to have this prior to implementation. But that, like I said, the meeting came out today at 3:00, and you had people from all over the United States on the call in reference to how-- I mean, it's the topic, it's the topic not just here in Columbus, it's everywhere. It's in Atlanta, it's everywhere. It's in California, it's everywhere. So if we're gonna have a strategic plan, it seemed like we need to align the strategic plan with how we can actually pay for, you know, and implement with funding.
I agree with all that. We would be doing the pre-work that you referenced through this homeless solutions group. We would be convening all of those various groups to gather feedback on the local issues. And then, I assume, this information that you're speaking about that came out in the webinar today, by the beginning of the year, we would have a much better picture of what that would look like, the process federally, who we would need to engage with federally to start to, you know, see about drawing down some of these funds, as you say. But we would be ready to hit the ground running because we would have already done the work of convening all of these various sector groups that we're proposing to do through this plan. That's going to be a main focus of this plan, is gathering local feedback from all of these various panels across all of these sectors. And so I think we would be in a great position to then bring in whatever federal recommendations there are on how to access funding and implement programming by the beginning of the year and be able to really hit the ground running faster than if we delayed this several months.
All right, Counselor Kogel?
I mean, I completely understand where Counselor Tucker is coming from. I do-- we did ask for a plan, and so here's part of our plan. So that's-- it sounds, Mr. Mayor, it sounds very much to me that things can operate in tandem, and if not, just a staggered start a little bit, but that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all for bringing it to us, and we'll have to continue to work on this as we go forward. And as the information kind of comes down from different organizations, then we'll move on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a lot of business items to cover this evening. First one up is the second reading of an item, ordinance zoning at 4389 Williams Road.
All right, there's a motion and a second to deny item one. Any discussion on that item? All right, if you put it on the screen and if you register your votes, and I said it is a motion to deny, so you'll vote yes. Working on it. Okay, and a motion to-- that's all right? So your vote is to deny? Okay. That's fine. All right, well, that-- he just, they changed it. So we should be good. All right, well, then that is denied.
Okay, that item is denied for the record, the Williams Road petition. All right, we've got some other second readings. Mayor, 2112 11th Avenue, this is recommended approval, ready for action.
Motion, second to approve item two. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. If you'd please put it on the screen and-- councilors cast your votes. That's approved.
All right. Next zoning item is 4306 3rd Avenue, recommended approval.
Motion, second to approve item three. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Please put it on the screen and councilors register your votes. And that is approved.
All right. Next item, 5674 Whittlesey Boulevard.
There's a motion, second to approve the rezoning on Whittlesey Boulevard. Any discussion on that one? All right, put it on the screen, please. Councilors, enter your votes. That's approved.
All right, and the next item with the same address, Whittlesey Boulevard, going to General Commercial.
All right, there's a motion, second to approve that item on Whittlesey Boulevard. Any discussion on that? All right, please put it on the screen and enter your votes. And that is approved.
Okay, then we've got 3564 Forest Road going to SFR 2. And--
Motion, second to approve the rezoning request on Forest Road. Discussion? Hearing none. Please put it on the screen. And councilors, you can enter your votes. That's approved.
All right, rezoning at Zero Casita Road.
Motion, second to approve the Casita Road rezoning. Any discussion? All right, put it on the screen, please. Enter your votes. That's approved.
1222 5th Avenue, this is going to Uptown zoning.
Motion and a second to approve 5th Avenue rezoning. Any discussion? All right, please put it on the screen. Council, please enter your votes. That's approved.
All right, now we've got a public hearing, first reading, amending ordinance 11-11. This would allow 342 units as opposed to 214 in the prior regulation. Mr. Thayer, you here with the applicant? This is at 9101 Macon Road. Did y'all want to come up and give a short presentation? Just give them your name and what y'all are planning to do.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Austin Gibson. I'm a lawyer at Page-Schran. I'm here in Columbus. We're here today, as the city attorney said, to amend an existing PMUD, or PUD, excuse me, that went into effect in 2011 and then was amended in 2012 to change a few of the conditions. And the primary purpose of the rezoning today is to go from the 214 units to the 342. And for those of you who are not familiar, Midland Downs is-- it's a mixed-use development that's out at the corner of Calumet Drive and Macon Road out in Midland. And originally, in 2011, it was set up for approximately 100 single-family units, multifamily component, and then a commercial piece as well. And through this process, we'd like to increase the density of the multifamily piece, but we're also slightly reducing the commercial side. And so the single-family portion of the development has been mostly built out at this stage over the last 15 or so years. And so now, you know, a lot's changed since 2011. And so just based on the cost of construction and those sorts of things, just from an economies of scale perspective, to develop the kind of Class A product that we like to develop on this property, you have to do a greater number of units so you can spread the cost of construction across all of those various units. Otherwise, the project just isn't economically feasible. And so this property is being developed by Midland Downs Development. The owners of Midland Downs are long-term apartment developers and holders here in Columbus. They have several properties in the local area. All of their properties are market rate. There's, you know, no low-income housing, none of that. They're all, you know, class-- we're gonna build Class A properties, resort-style pool, all of those kind of things. And council and the citizens who live nearby can be rest assured that, of course, it's going to be owned and held by the developer for a long time. It's not a community that's going to be built and then flipped to, you know, an out-of-town investor or something of that sort. We have had extensive conversations with the neighborhood around this project. Counselor Allen was kind enough to set up a neighborhood meeting several weeks ago, and we had, I would guess, around 100 to 125 residents come, and we spent about three to three and a half hours just talking through some concerns. And obviously, not all of those concerns were things that we could address, but some of the items that were raised at that meeting were traffic concerns on Macon Road, how this would affect access on Calumet Drive. And obviously, you know, Macon Road's a Georgia Department of Transportation road, and so we're very limited in what we can do traffic-wise. But, you know, we have committed to starting those conversations with GDOT to try to, you know, see what things can be done to, you know, whether it's lighting that intersection or, you know, other potential things that could reduce the, you know, the traffic in that area. We've also had extensive communication with the HOA through that neighborhood meeting and then several subsequent, you know, email exchanges, meetings, and phone calls. We've really tried to engage the HOA, and while we obviously don't agree on everything, you know, we really are trying to do some reasonable things to make the development more appealing to those neighbors. For example, we have agreed to install a privacy fence along the border between the multifamily piece and the single-family side. And there's already a creek at that border, so it really is several hundred feet in that border anyway. So the idea is probably that you won't be able to see the fence from the single family, but at least it would be there to protect against any cross-traffic. And then, we've also agreed to provide some other assistance to the HOA because Mr. Thayer was the clarion on that HOA and still had some rights under the HOA, and so we're trying to clean that up as a benefit. Another concern that was raised was crime. And, you know, there's a common conception out there that, you know, that a multifamily brings crime with it. And really, I think it's, you know, sometimes, you know, more people can bring more crime. Crime is everywhere, and so-- but we do do extensive screening on our properties to try to limit, you know, any unseemly elements coming into the property. We're very hands-on owners who, you know, have a management style of, you know, if anything goes wrong, we immediately, you know, get you out of there. So it's not, it's not going to be a hands-off approach. We're going to be very hands-on in trying to manage the property. And we're going to, you know, treat it like the property that it is, which is our own. And obviously, we have a vested interest in that property being appealing to people who may come and live there. And so, truthfully, we think this project meets all of the requirements to rezone, and we would be happy to answer any questions you all or anyone else may have. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers? Whoop, I got the wrong one, I'm sorry. It's Counselor Crabbe.
It'll be quick.
I knew it was in that corner.
Just really quick, for the record, can you give us some examples of other properties in the Columbus area that this developer has?
Of course. At this time, I'll invite the Thayers up, and they can provide that information.
You know, if you talk about, say, the Lake Bottom area, we've got the Village on Cherokee, La Crosse Apartments going around, the Lake Bottom Hillcrest Apartments. All of those were built earlier on, but we've maintained them well and still fit in the neighborhoods. Brittwood Apartments is another example of a longstanding property we have in the Columbus area. Milgen Village is closer out to that east side of town along Milgen Road. We've spent a good bit of money enhancing that property through the years as they get age on them. I think the story there is that we're long-term holders of those properties, and we continue to put money in them and enhance them throughout the years. Does that answer the question?
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Austin, just to go back through a couple of things, you said there was a privacy fence and to, I guess, accommodate the whole neighborhood. This would be a gated community, was that--
Yes, sir. Our plan is for it to be a gated community. And there were some-- there were some questions whether we will have security cameras, and we typically have security access cameras and access control on all our properties. This would be the case here also.
Okay, the access would be off Calumet?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Chambers?
Thank you. So currently, it's already approved for 214?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we just want to increase. My question is, what's the price point for each unit?
You know, one, two, and three bedrooms vary, and while price is related to construction costs, we anticipate somewhere between, under that $2,000 mark, say $15,000 to $2,000, somewhere in that range, depending on size. Again, these units, when they're said and done, probably average in excess of $250,000 a unit. So, you know, that dictates strong rental rates in that price.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the questions.
That's all the questions around the table, but we got planning here. Now, this is a public hearing, so we're gonna let anybody in the audience who wants to speak. Y'all raise your hand if you would. All right? Come on up, sir.
If you just state your name and residence for the record, please.
My name is Eddie Stallworth. I stay in that community. I've been to another meeting. As I've already heard, that a lot of these things have already been approved for the time, for the amount of people. By increasing the number in this particular area of this property, it's gonna be more people. And our area already having problems with traffic, school buses. Those need to be accounted for. How are you gonna increase the schools' number and population? Also, crime. I'm also on HOA membership, and that's one of the things we've also had to-- And that's one of the things we've also had to hire our own policemen to go in our area. We also have our own camera system. So, in this area, you guys talked about increasing more people. That's going to be a problem for us. The speeders, crime, just in our, that Midland Down, it had several break-ins last couple of weeks. We had drug interventions from, from the Sheriff's Department. I've actually in my neighborhood heard flashbangs, grenades going off, and major intervention. So, that area right now need to be looked at. Drainage, a lot of this, these particular areas in the, that's not been accounted for, even where my house is at. Pratt Whitney's in that area as well. And they're actually building and extending their particular property. Matter of fact, Pratt Whitney, basically my backyard. So, and drainage needs to be looked at. Traffic control. Get in and out during school time. You're trying to get out of that area, including the Midland Down area. It's a mess. And so, again, it's, I think a lot of these has already been approved. But at the same time, please take into consideration traffic control, crime control, and drainage control in that area. So, all the community can be serviced in that area. That's my guess, while increasing the number of folks coming in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Danny Aaron, CBIA, 9125 Garrett Lake Drive. I can appreciate every developer. I'm a junior developer in training, hopefully to be as big as you one day. We're building affordable housing and I, we're trying to champion that, that affordable housing cause because there's such a gap, right, as Realtors on the council know how many homes we actually need. Unfortunately for this one, I actually live within just a few blocks of this, of this item here for rezoning. So, I understand that some things have already been approved 15 years ago. And I just want to remind council, 15 years ago, we barely had a Facebook and there was no social media being used to let people know that something was going to be rezoned unless they had a sign out by the road, as is conducted today. I fast-forward 15 years and within days of this being, this meeting, or this item being up for rezoning, you know, the PAC meeting, nobody knew that it was happening except, of course, I'll say this, some people found out very late about the PAC meeting. I have never seen such a public outcry. I mean, I've been to many of them. They're handled right here in this very room. And there was, you know, some, some folks speaking in regards to it positively, of course. And again, thank you for what you do with our community. But the entire room rose up, came over here, and was against it. And it took, I don't know how long. And I had never seen anything like that, where there was such a public outcry to oppose it. And yet, there was only one, the chair actually was the one person who voted against it when everybody voted for it. I actually, I was, I was, I was blown away. I was a little surprised. I actually called Counselor Allen, and thank you for taking my phone call, sir. And I just, I had never seen that before. And I get it that this was 15 years ago, that it was approved. Again, I don't think if you tried to do that today, it would, it would pass as it is. But here we are. And thank you for the Planning Department for putting on that, for your input and all, and all, you know, that we, that we did get. None of that hostility, and there was a lot of hostility, was directed at anybody from the city or any of that, or even, or even y'all, I mean, at all. It was just a matter of folks who had concerns with what was happening in their neighborhood. I'll say they, I know we had a sign-up, in that info meeting, thank you again, Counselor Allen, for setting that up. I know we had a sign-up sheet that many people put their names on there. And they were looking to make sure that they were aware of this meeting. And that room, it was front page on the ledger when that meeting happened. It was, if it was 10 row, 10 people to a row, there was two full rooms, only standing room. That had to have been at least 250 people. And nobody had anything positive to say about the extra units. I, I, you know, all I, all I did was let people know, hey, let your councilors know. If you, if you want this to pass as is, let them know, please vote yes. If you don't, let them know to please vote no and tell them why. But at that meeting, there were several, the majority of those neighbors, because what we can't see here is that there's actually two major developments happening right next to each other at the exact same time. And both of them are saying, we don't know what they're doing, they don't know what we're doing. And I just see that that's just a disservice to that community for this to be happening at the same time. We don't know the impacts really yet. We know that this is happening now, and again, thank you for what you do. We also know that another developer is developing literally within 20 feet of where this is happening, an entire, everything past Pratt and Whitney. I don't know how many homes they're looking to put over there. But we're not talking about that because it's already been done. So, the fact that both of these developers are doing this at the exact same time, I honestly feel, and this may be a moot point tonight because this is, it is what it is. But the fact that they're doing this at the same time, I cannot see how anybody could actually really dictate what's going to happen. It's like you're building two massive buildings, two apartment complexes right next to each other at the same time, and you say you have all the data. And I don't know how you're able to say that because they're being built at the exact same time. And that means the influxes of the schools, I know that there's a 4%, something like that, where they say that the school can just absorb students. Have they spoken to the principals? Because when you talk to the principal, they're like, yeah, no, we don't know what to do with the kids. So, at, at this point, again, I'm, I'm just, again, thankful for new development and new housing. I just don't understand why, if you know there was so much public outcry, why not just take what you already have? You got it approved 15 years ago. Take that, build that, even leave it, leave the units alone for right now, maybe save yourself some space for later. I get it, you got to make some money. You got to recuperate costs. I understand. There's 15 years of holding costs here, I get it. But I just don't understand how we're okay with these two developments happening at the same time. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, ma'am, come on up, give them your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Carden. I am the Vice President of the Midland Downs HOA. I just wanted to say that all of that is true. I'm actually one of the first people that spread the notice and awareness to several of the Midland neighborhoods. And we all spoke and got together. And yes, many of us showed up at the PAC meeting, and even more of us showed up at the neighborhood meeting that Mr. Allen scheduled for us. So, thank you again. That meeting, I think, was a lot of anger for, if I'm being completely honest, I think a majority of the anger came from, like, the way that our neighbors were notified. There was a certain barrier that was notified. And then also, many, we're in newer development, Midland Downs is at least. And a lot of our neighbors felt, I think, for lack of a better word, bamboozled because they were not aware that there was an apartment and commercial place going in. It's not really Mr. Thayer's fault. Many of us were not aware. However, I do have to say that after we were able to get away from that public, I'm going to call it a meeting, Mr. Thayer and his team relentlessly reached out to the Midland Downs HOA. I mean, I was on vacation and came back and found Facebook chats and emails that I hadn't seen otherwise. And when I got back, as soon as I got back, he met with myself and the president, who can't be here today, his name is Kyle Emery. He is getting married and he's in Ireland. But we're here to say that while we don't, we know that we can't change it, but Mr. Thayer has done a lot to kind of like ease the concerns of the neighborhood. He's addressed so many things of us privately, like in his office, one-on-one, including before we even got there, he took everything from the meeting that we had and had already spoken to the Department of Transportation, was willing to help us go back and set the meetings because he can't do anything about the traffic, but he can help our neighborhood get where we need to go on that. He, he relented on the fence. I think for a while, he didn't understand why, but Kyle and I explained that it's not just about the crime, but it's any crime that does happen, even on the apartment side. A fence that tall is going to hinder people, people from being able to come through that, that green area that we both have. So, that was another thing. And yes, our neighborhood is concerned with traffic, but like I said, he's addressed that. Not to mention that I think we are moving a traffic camera. We're going to use a traffic camera in that area so that all the neighborhood have more in the back. So, not just my neighborhood, but also Garrett Pines can have more of a tracking device of any cars that do go through there as well. So, we, he's addressed the things that he can address. Also, just to be completely clear, I got together with my entire neighborhood. We put out Facebook notifications and I actually hosted a meeting at my house and Zoom and presented everything that Mr. Thayer told us to the neighborhood. While, again, a lot of them just feel bamboozled that they weren't made aware of the parcel changes, many of them recognize that the development of the Midland area includes our homes. And so, with Mr. Thayer's help and making sure that we understand that he's doing everything he can to stop the crime, to be able to help us with the traffic. Also, he can't do anything about the schools, but I do know that he's willing to speak on that as too. So, I think for Midland Downs, at the very least, we are okay with this moving forward. We feel like we have a good partnership. And we do believe that he's going to do everything he can to make sure that the apartments themselves are going to be beneficial to the area. Also, we are very much in favor of a smaller commercial property, bigger apartments, just in the long run. We think that a smaller commercial property is going to be more beneficial to us. These are just kind of the things that we've been talking about, by the way, non-stop. Mr. Thayer has not stopped in our email box. So, he's been in constant communication and was willing to even take calls and emails from the Garrett Pines HOA, once I told him they wanted to speak about some things too. And I don't know the ins and outs of those conversations, but he really is trying to make sure that everybody at least is on the same page. He is not trying to cause any discord out there. So, he's doing what he can. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of that. So, thank you. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, ladies.
Hello, my name is Kenya. And I'm on the HOA board. I'm not the president. Our president's not here. But I just want to say one thing. You're not the president, but you're president, are you assistant president or?
I'm the vice president.
Vice president?
I'm the HOA's title president.
Okay, we have not received any information from you, from you guys, when the meetings, I guess you had private meetings and, I guess, get-together, whatever. We have not heard anything. Just recently, when all this came about, actually, when we, when I built my house, and I, yes, I am upset, but I'm over it now because everything's been approved. When I first came here and got my house built, I was told, whatever, I guess, when my house was built and all, a bunch of other houses being built, there was going to be no more development. So, I decided, okay, that's good. My house is like right behind Pratt and Whitney. So, we're like, okay, cool. The neighborhood seems nice, everything seems nice and quiet. Midland Downs was just getting built. We're like, okay, they're building a new development, okay. And then reverse, making everything's forward. Now, we're finding out Pratt and Whitney, they're building behind us, trees are going down, I'm hearing them every day. And then now, we're getting development, building their property on Midland Downs. I'm at the point, like, okay, we, we had crime. The schools, I don't even see enough schools. The buses, transportation, right now, we're having neighbors parking all over the street, like not caring. We've been trying to fight that. We've been having cops, we're actually paying cops to ride around in our neighborhood to cut down with the speeding and the crime. We're paying them on our HOA money. I don't know about this whole situation. I know you guys are going to prove it, but you have to look at it. Drainage, the drainage is bad. Everyone's complaining about drainage. When they build in Garrett Creek, not the first part, the backside of Garrett Creek, if you know, the drainage has been horrible. Just the whole building thing, period, has been horrible. I just really want you guys to look at just the whole community and our situation and the traffic. Like you said, I guess you're getting traffic together, people talking about it, but it's a serious problem in the whole neighborhood, not just Midland Downs. I understand that people need a place to stay, you know? But at the same time, you already have 214 units was approved. Why you need more? That's going to be more increased, more people. Then the schools are going to complain, we don't have enough, you know, enough area for these children to be in because we got so many, bad enough, we got a lot of kids in our neighborhood. They play all in the streets every day. So, you know, my thing is, please just take a look at the whole situation.
Hi, my name is Pamela Markit, and I'm on the HOA board as well. Our concern is the additional units. There's nothing we can do about the original units because that has already been approved. These are our homes. We retired there not to have the riffraff and the riffraffers come in and destroy that. We're asking that you not approve the additional units. I understand they're trying to make money. I, I get that. But these are our homes. I just like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else like to be heard? Anybody? All right, this is on first reading. It's not going to be voted on for another two weeks. Mayor, do you want to take a break and check with a deputy on the alarm or whatever they're investigating? We can take a two-minute break if you want to.
We'll do that. I want to thank y'all for being here this evening. And we'll, we'll get it back in front of us in two weeks.
Yeah, thank y'all.
All right, I'll, I'll take, we'll clear a short recess or break for about two minutes. All right, I appreciate everybody's indulgence out of an abundance of caution. Any, any little thing like that, we're always going to check on, make sure that the folks are here or safe. And it, as we had anticipated, it was, it was really nothing. It's just some folks were cold, we turned the heat on for just a few minutes. And as it happens in your house, when that heating coil hits the, hits some of the dust, it has that little burnt smell. So, I think that's what it was. But everybody's okay, everything is fine in the building. So, but thank you for your, thank you for your patience. Mr. City Attorney, we'll continue with your agenda.
All right, we're going to move on to item number 10. This is the street map change correction from Debbie Cont Drive spelling. But it's just a first hearing. Any questions? See, we'll bring that back for a vote in two weeks. Next item is the Public Safety Pay Reform Plan to revise court pay from $25 to $50 and for other purposes. Chief, I don't know if he's still around, but this was requested to help incentivize that appearance in court, but it's ready for any discussion at this- that appearance in court, but it's ready for any discussion at this time. If we don't have questions, we'll bring it back. Any hands around the table? I don't see any.
Yeah, there is one. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you said it's going to raise it from what, Mr. City Attorney?
Twenty-five to per court appearance to $50.
Okay, 25 to 50, okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't, I think part of the, one of the challenges, it hadn't really been any increase in, in years ago yet.
That's been maybe decades at that level.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
We'll bring that back in two weeks, Mayor.
Okay.
And item 12, we've got a special exception resolution, it's a place of worship for us, Road.
Motion and a second to approve item 12, any discussion on that item? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and counsel, you can enter your votes, please. That's approved.
That passes. Item 13, I believe we've got a motion to table this, Counselor Hickey.
Yes, we want to delay it until indefinitely, until we can get together and have some more discussion about it, so, the council, so that's, that's what we want to do with that, so.
Okay, there's no objection, we'll just table the item and bring it back when requested.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next item, I need to call on the Finance Director, Ms. Alexander, I think we have some finance advisors here, Mr. Rogers. We're going to call up the resolution authorizing the preparation of Notice of Sale Preliminary Official Statement for General Obligation Sales Tax Bonds, approximately $50 million, I think, was left in the authorized amount, but we'll let these folks cover that briefly.
Yes, hello again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city attorney mentioned, the resolution that's on the agenda tonight is to issue bonds for the remaining $50 million relative to the 2021 SPOLOs. As you all may recall, as part of the 2021 SPOLOs, there were, there was approval to issue $200 million in general obligation bonds for the construction of a new judicial center. In 2022, we issued 150 million of the 200 million, and so what's on the agenda tonight is approval for the remaining 50 million so that we can complete construction of the new judicial center. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Courtney Rogers, he is the Senior Vice President with Davenport and Company, they are the city's financial advisors, they've served in that capacity for a very long time, and he is going to briefly discuss the plan of finance for the $50 million bond issue, so.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone, members of council, good to see you again. So I've got only a few pages tonight, and they're going to be too long, but I wanted to make sure everyone understands, and there's a little bit of bond math in here, so you have to bear with us. While Angelica talked about the 200 million that we authorized, that the vote, I should say the voters authorized, back in 2021 for the judicial center, we did issue, you'll see on this page in that second column, 100, right at 130 million. Now, bond math, we were able to sell the bonds at a premium, so the buyers actually paid a little more than par, in return, we gave them a little bit of more interest from the interest payment standpoint, but we were able to produce 150 million in project costs. So that's what Ms. Alexander was referring to, is we were able to put 150 million toward the project. Now we need to do the other 50 million, which is what, what we were talking, what we're talking about. Now, we have 70 million authorized, but we're probably not going to issue all that, we won't need to issue all that in order to produce 50 million to finish the project out, because we have basically what finance staff has told us, we've got 220 million in our budget, 20, roughly 20 million for the project, or 200 million for the project, 20 million for interest, that gets us to the 220. Just to give you a sense of where interest rates are, we were very fortunate when we issued the first set of bonds, the larger piece, if you will, interest rates were at the gold bar there, in that blue shaded area, because remember, we're only issuing debt going out to about seven years, so rates were very low back then, coming out of COVID in 2022, we issued that debt at a 1.56 TIC. The green is where our yield curve is today. So rates have gone up, the good news is, the Fed's looking to cut rates again, and that will impact us directly, because those, generally in our world, the tax-exempt bonds, when the Fed lowers rates, it affects basically the first five or six years, which is right where we're going to be issuing this debt. And they should be meeting right before, there's, right now, the market feels like they're going to cut at least a quarter in September, roughly the week before we sell bonds, so that, our timing may end up being very good for us. This just shows you where the five-year tax-exempt interest rate has been, going back to earlier this year, you can see it's been coming down, and that's really the market anticipating cuts coming from the Fed. As we've always done with you all, we've sold bonds in a competitive process, we basically put it out for bid, we let the best bid win, that's our recommendation to do that again. We'll be talking to the rating agencies next week, in fact, we have the meeting scheduled to talk to the rating agencies to, again, for them to look at our bond rating, we put together all the documents and have it put out again for the Wall Street to put their bids in. Kind of going back to what I just talked about, again, we're going to be setting the exact borrowing amount based on that $220 million budget that we have for total project and interest cost, and, and like we talked about, we're thinking right now, as, as the City Attorney, Mr. Lee, talked about, we're looking at just under 50 million, so 48.8 is where we are today with our estimates, and that gets us a true interest cost of about 3.2% for that period. This gives you a sense of where the debt service is going, what it looks like, again, we've already issued some of the debt, we front-loaded it, we've been paying that off, and now we're going to issue the balance of it, and you'll see that total project budget there of 220, we're projecting right now, just being within $1,000 of that number. So again, if we only issue the roughly 48 million right now, we will have some extra bonds, but we're not anticipating having to go out and issue those. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the resolution, gives us the go-forward, if you will, method of sale, the market update, and then we're going to be talking to the agencies, as I mentioned, next week on the 3rd, the sale is scheduled for the 23rd, and we'll be back to you that evening for your final approval on the actual results of that sale, and then we'll move toward closing by early October. So with that, I have to answer any questions you might have.
Doesn't appear to be any.
No questions? All right.
We'll take a motion.
Need to vote on the resolution then?
Motion and a second to approve, any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Courtney, thank you, thank you for being so patient, too.
All right, thanks, sir, for being here. Mayor, that concludes the formal business agenda, we got a request for executive session to discuss litigation matter and acquisition and disposal of real estate, that's all we have.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did want to state for the record that Counselor Tucker will be attending the remainder of the meeting virtually, and she was in favor of item 14 on the city attorney's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bless you. All right, we'll move to the public agenda, a reminder that you'll have five minutes, and we'll try to give you some kind of signal when you get to about a minute left, if you cannot complete your comments in five minutes, we'll be glad to provide three additional minutes at the end of the meeting after the clerk's agenda. So when you come up, just state your name and where you're from. First is Ms. Paula Johnson, representing Adriana Jamila Nobles, daughter's cold murder case. Okay, I don't see Ms. Johnson. All right, next is Dr. Natalie Nicole, representing Role Model Academy, regarding timely accountability for post eviction debris and illegal tire disposal on right of way. Welcome.
Ma'am, may I give you a piece, please? Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, city council, mayor, and everybody in their respective places. On the very last page, you'll see some pictures that are current as of today, underneath, you'll see, the first picture says post eviction, almost 30 days, a home that was reported last year, the owner is not local here, and then you'll see, under the tires, was also reported last year, in addition to, you'll see a tire that's been there for more than 30 days. And basically, what I'm here tonight is to discuss the timely accountability for post eviction debris and illegal tire disposal on the right of way. The main point that I really would like to make is just as a business owner in that area, the trash comes every Monday, we put our containers out, they pass by this stuff just like we do in the neighborhood, and I would like for it to be more proactive as opposed to reactive, meaning citizens have to call in time after time, as I've mentioned, some of this is a year long. When they pass by, if there is a system in place where they can say, hey, we need to pick this up, we need to take care of this in-house, that would be so helpful. As a veteran, well-traveled, live different places, for instance, California, trash issues, just like everybody else, they sweep the roads multiple times a week, cars have to be relocated, they drive through, they sweep the road, if your car is in place, there's somebody right behind them giving you a citation right on the spot. So, all that to say, if our public works department, and I put all my notes here in this, could just be a little bit more proactive about taking care of things, as opposed to citizens having to do a lot of calling in, because I've put in more than 20 requests on my app, more than 20 requests over a year's time, certain things haven't been taken care of, certain things have, and I'm truly appreciative of the things that have been taken care of, and I'm grateful because it's not about point fingers and saying who's not doing what, but just getting it done and getting it taken care of, and that's, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Cogan?
Deputy City Manager, what, what is our, or maybe if Ms. Short is here, what is our policy on stopping if there's large objects on the side of the road, or things that have been put on the road for a long period of time? What, what is the policy as far as, like, can, can public work stop and do that, or is there a, and if not, is there a reason, or, I mean, is, is that something that can be worked on?
It is something that we are currently working on, it's really ironic that this came up, because we've had a staff meeting, you have approximately six route supervisors that do nothing but run every route for the day of that waste collection, and their job is to do just that, to be proactive, to identify piles that need to be addressed by the supervisor, or to tag a can, or tag a pile, or identify illegal material that can't be out there that we need to make sure is handled by our compliance officers, but they need to get out of their vehicles, knock on the doors, and let the residents know what the issue is, if there's an issue, and we just had a conversation about that this week.
So like, if there's tires on, like, if there's a single tire on the side of the road, do they have to go knock on the door?
No, really and truly, they're in pickup trucks, they can pick up that tire and throw it in the back of the truck, in my opinion, and that's what I asked them to do.
All right, and is that six officers that are out six days, or five days a week, at all times, or are they just throughout?
Every day, waste collection is run, they're on the road.
Okay, great.
Even on Wednesday sometimes.
All right, super, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Drew. All right, next is Ms. Elamine, representing Southern Anti-Racism Racism Network, regarding Crime Prevention Programs, Rules, and Standards.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Number Nine, for returning my call. I think it's very important for us to converse with each other and understand each other Budgets are moral and political instruments. The Columbus Consolidated Budget is the most political budget I've ever known. The Crime Prevention Department was formed in 2009. The debate that must have gone on was about the fact that we were in a catastrophic recession where the pension plans everywhere, including my well-funded pension plans, took major hits, major hits in 2009, and you formed a department with an executive-level staff person with salary and benefits in the middle of a recession, the worst recession, the worst recession. You're still trying to recover the pension plans from the fact that you set a different priority. I know that that debate about the fact that you did that during the recession led to possibly one or two of the four no votes, it's just squeak by, it's squeak by, six four vote. Baker, Hunter, Pew, and Woodson, they all voted no, they all voted no. So I know that this was controversial in 2009. So Obama was president then, and in 2008, when you passed a public safety, local option sales tax, a permanent tax for public safety, we were geared up to elect the first black president. So this is the historical context in which this takes place, and I think people have to understand it, because I know it's the mayor's money, it was always set up to be the mayor's money. And Mayor Tomlinson, she funnel nearly $400,000 to a nonprofit in Atlanta called Georgia Appleseed, a nonprofit of lawyers, while her husband, also a lawyer, was on their board. She did that, that's how this crime prevention money has been used, I blew the whistle on it, I blew the whistle on it, and the whistleblower hearing that took place here, it was a total whitewash, it was a total whitewash, but that's how the money has been used. So you're talking about metrics, let's talk about measurable outcomes, let's talk about exactly how is the money being used, and that's what I'm calling on citizens to wake up and pay attention, when you can't find $35,000 to fund community engagement for the most miserable social concern that we have come across, homelessness. I said to Pat, because I'm a grassroots fundraiser, okay, so rejection from grants is common. Social justice organizations represent about 9% of all the funding, so grants, not a big deal. As I said to Pat, $35,000 is 350 people giving $100, that's the equivalent of 35, and I said, I'll be one of them, you can't find $35,000 and let you giving away a million as patronage money. Every citizen should understand, you can't afford to do this anymore, that's what I'm saying, but as long as you're doing it, you should make it fair, and I've sent you enough emails so you know, but understand the historical context in which this happened, and it's not grants, it's an insulting service contracts, okay? I'll say more, if I can hang around, I will say more, stop it, just stop it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Dr. Marvin Broadwater, Sr., regarding Crime Prevention Grants.
My name is Marvin Broadwater, Sr., and I live in the 31909 zip code. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Madam Deputy City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, City Administration, City Staff. Mr. City Attorney, City Administration, City Staff, and citizens of this great city. As always, before I start, I would like to thank all of you for your continued service to our community. You all have done some fantastic things for the city as a group. There have been times, however, when I have disagreed with your decisions, or there have been other times we have been at different ends of the spectrum on issues. However, this is not one of those times. I felt compelled to bring this presentation to you approximately three weeks ago. The Omega Lamp Lighters is a mentoring group mentored by the Lambda Ota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. The primary objective of this program is to mentor the Omega Lamp Lighters, approximately seventy. We started out with twenty, through the sixth and twelfth grades. The goal is to ensure these young men become productive citizens in their community by teaching the principles of leadership, academics, maturity, and perseverance with a focus on academic excellence, community service, and personal growth. The overall goal is to reduce non-appropriate behavior in these young men's lives and instill a desire to lead the generation that follows them. The youth learn pertinent leadership skills by planning, implementing, and executing events. I believe this is the premier mentoring program in our city. The program has been recognized as the number-one mentoring program for Omega Sci-Fi in the Seventh District, which includes, which includes the states of Alabama, Florida, Georgia, and Mississippi. There are one hundred and fifty-three chapters in the district. Recently, one of our young men was recently named the Mentor of the Year for the State of Georgia, and we have a two-time Mentor of the Year. The program has received funds through the Crime Prevention Grants. Several of you have attended a few of our events. It is no secret that many want this program dismantled or eliminated. If that happens, I believe that would be one of the greatest and monumental travesties, travesties you could render. Let me explain why. This is definitely not enough time to list everything these young men provide to this community, but I'll list a few. Over the last three years, the young men in this program have adopted a public housing area, E.E. Farley Apartments, more commonly known as Farley Homes. These young men have donated hams and turkeys during the Thanksgiving and Christmas season. They have purchased groceries for the elderly, presented toys for the children, and even celebrated Mother's Day with single mothers there, giving them a sense of hope and pride. These gestures teach our Omega Lamp Lighters not only the reason why, not only the reason why community service is important, they also learn compassion and empathy for those that are not as fortunate as them. Over the last four years, every senior, twenty-one to be exact, has applied for and were, and was accepted to a four-year institution of higher learning. Subjects that they have, they received seventy-two briefings in the last three years. Some of those briefings, the importance of an education, PSAT, SAT, ACT training, resume writing, the elevator speech, public speaking, manners, obtaining scholarship, scholarships, adequate, doing the right thing, you are powerful. They've had briefings on accountability, responsibility, just to name a few. And I would be remiss if I did not mention one of our students, one of the Omega Lamp Lighters, graduated from Yale University last year. Did y'all hear that? He graduated from Yale. When the young man went into the program, he was identified as a troubled student. But with some structure in his life, he graduated from Yale, an Ivy League school. All it took was someone to take some time with him. So I say this, continue the grant-writing program, Crime Prevention Program. Continue with it. And if you can find a couple of dollars, Counselor Anker, a couple more dollars, find it, because it works. It works. I'm going to need my three extra minutes. I got, I got a couple more things to say.
Yes, sir.
But thank you very much. God bless.
All right. Next is Mr. Timothy Veal regarding community concerns. Mr. Veal's not here. Mr. Martin Lawrence regarding a public agenda, kindness always matters.
To this council, Mayor of this city, 31808 zip code, to all of those who sit around the table, good evening to each of you. Kindness always matter. Kindness always matter. I was at a function on last Thursday, and one of the council persons who's present today, for the first time, I was able to reach out, extend the arm, and put it around her shoulder. I was so happy. She greeted me in a way that I haven't been greeted by her before. Not to try to get any prestige or anything. I think I greet everybody the same way when I meet you. And I want you to know, if I could just say kindness really matter. It fosters relationships. It pulls us closer together. Your compelling message on the last City Council meeting that we were at, Mr. Hickey, my eyes was just as wet as yours, because we see that sometime we have to feel what other people feel. Someone else may be homeless today, but it could be us on the same road, street, in the bushes tomorrow. We may feel like we have achieved everything, but sometime issues come up, and we are not as far as we think we are. I read somewhere where it say that many people are just one paycheck away from homelessness or unhoused. And I, I really believe that. I don't know how many of us have just reached out to someone that's a little bit more unfortunate than we are. But kindness really matter when we go out of our way to try to help someone that really needs to help. Some people don't want help, so we can't help everybody. Those that need help, we really need to reach out. And I'm wanting to say we need to increase more happiness in this city. We need to act like we are gavenized together. Whatever we go through, it's okay. We can make it through this, but let's be kind to each other. Let's not chop each other up because we don't see or hear what we want to hear. It's not about you, it's all about him. And I can tell you who him is. It's all about God. If we don't work for God and His humanity, we will be in trouble. So I can say that. Let's work strong, work together to make stronger social connections. We need to, I just saw a group of people, they asked for $35,000. That's, you know, they asked for $35,000. I hope that somewhere that is achieved. I hope they can get what they need to do more studies so that we might be able to help someone else. Let's reduce stress. Let's reduce the stress. How do we do, do that? Being kind, it really matter. Reduce the stress. Let's find something to laugh about. You know, it's funny when we see something and we just so starched and we don't, we just have our head in the air. Let's drop our head sometime, and we'll see what's really going on around us. Let's understand that we are going to be here for a portion of time, and then time is going to run out. And what you do with your time is going to count in history. All of us will have a point in history that somebody going to look at what we did as people. You are sitting on that side. I'm here representing every citizen of this community. Why? Because I love us enough, not talking about us as in my color, I'm talking about people enough to want to work with you to make things better. I think we could do it. What will it take just to be kind? Because it really matter. Thank you for you listening at me. I'm not ranting anymore. I'm tired of that. I just want to work and have a better relationship with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And it feels good when the mayor can call you Mark by your first name.
I'm sorry, that's, that slipped that. Mr. Lawrence, I'm sorry.
I just do.
Yeah, you will.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Next, we have the City Manager's Agenda.
Okay. Yes, we do have a few items on the agenda this evening. The first of which is approval is requested to apply for, and if approved, accept a loan from the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority for $7.85 million. And this is to the cost of borrowing funds to expand Phase Five sale expansion at Pine Grove Landfield.
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Okay, Counselor. Counselor Anker.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. I want to ask just about the funds. I remember, you know, this started before I joined council. And I was trying to look back and find the facts. I couldn't find them, but I think we started out with a fix for the landfill of a $6.2 million number. I think when things started turning around and we were having problems, it went to eight million. And now with the money we've already put into the program, about a million and a half, we're up to nine million. And in the, the presentation that came out for the motion was different just two days ago, and I'm trying to understand where the differences are and why has it gone up so fast in such a little amount of time? And then, I have a separate question after that. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. We're going to call on our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, so there has been some discussion relative to the initial cost that was presented. As you may recall, earlier this year, I believe it was in the February timeframe, consultants for the Public Works Department came and made presentation to the council about the expansion or the need for the expanding the landfill, particularly moving forward with Phase Five. I believe at that time, it was a total of eight million dollars that was being requested as the need to expand, expand the landfill. Council did move forward with some support from the general fund. It was about 1.3 million dollars that was approved by the council to go towards the cost of expanding the landfill. So that did leave roughly six, just over six million, almost 6.1 million, I'll just round it up, say 6.1 million, that was needed to sort of complete the funding that was being requested. What was not considered at that particular time by the consultant was the contingency funding that we would need because of the length of time that it really sort of took to, that it would, between the presentation and when construction would begin for the landfill, so there was, wasn't really any contingency money put into the initial construction costs. In addition to that, some of the financing costs, you know, initially, it was that what was being requested was that the city would bear the burden of funding the expansion without it being financed. And so some of those initial financing costs, was it also contemplated when the consultant gave the initial presentation back in February? So.
So are we going to borrow the money upfront and hope we hold within those numbers? Or a chance we're going to go over those numbers?
Well, the consultant and Dreel can maybe speak more so specifically with this, because I know she's been in this conversation with the consultant, but they feel pretty good about the number that they, the estimates that they've, the revised estimates that they've given us to include the contingency as well as the financing costs.
Thanks. And Director, does the debt service on this loan, if, you know, just doing simple calculations, $750,000 a year, maybe $62,000 a month? Do our extra fees, are they going to cover the, this, or where, where are the fees coming out of?
The fees will cover the debt service in actuality, based on the current interest rates with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. The debt service at the 7.8, which is the maximum, we may not need the, the full amount, which is why it says up to 7.85 million. But the debt service on that amount would be about 677,000, and that is, that was contemplated in the budget with the fee increases, so.
So with the fee increases, will we have any money left over? We're going to spend about the same as we're borrowing?
We will have some funding. All of the fee increases were not solely for the financing of this expansion. Some of the fee increases also included some operational, additional operational funds for the integrated waste system.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I think Counselor Crabbe had a question.
Are we, thank you. Is this expansion part of the vertical expansion, or is this a new cell that we're opening?
The new cell.
Where, what's the status of the vertical expansion?
I'll let the Public Works Director speak to that.
So we are right now waiting on the road plans for the vertical expansion from our consultants, so that our heavy equipment operators can start on that. But we can't start that process until we get the road plan or the layout to go around this landfill safely with this heavy equipment.
So are we still not in compliance?
No, no, we're in compliance.
You are?
Yes. Yes, we are in compliance and have been, yeah.
The permit's been approved.
Oh, yeah, the permit's been approved. The vertical expansion's been approved. Our major mod has been approved.
When was it approved?
Which one?
The vertical expansion.
The vertical expansion was almost three months ago, about three months ago.
That's kind of information we like to hear, you know, to kind of as a follow-up. I don't remember hearing that it was finally, maybe, and maybe I just didn't hear it. Maybe I was in the back eating a sandwich.
I, I sent out the email to my superiors to let them know that it was approved, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Item two is the approval is requested to designate.
I think there's a motion in a second to approve on it.
Yep, not voting.
Any comments on that item? All right. Please put it on the screen, Counsel. You can go ahead and vote. We got anybody operating the screen? All right, here we go. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that passes.
Okay. The next item is requesting approval to designate 25 acres of city-owned property at 601 and 602 11th Avenue as the new cell jail site.
All right, there's a motion in a second to approve that item. Any discussion? All right, can we, will it go on the screen? Yeah. Counsel, please enter your votes. Okay, you want to do that before you cast your vote? I didn't, I guess that passed. I didn't see it. Okay. Oh. Okay, we've got, well, all, to that motion, Mr. Anker, if you want to ask your question, we've got time.
I, I would, my questions around the jail are, maybe I was not privy to the site selection until two weeks ago. And I'd really like to see us slow, slow it down and take some developers in there and look. And I asked some critical questions I thought were very relevant to site selection, which included costs to relocate places that we're voting on today. So relocating, Public Works, tearing down the old jail. This might be the right site. We, you know, in my opinion, we are going to get a new jail, but I, I'd like to slow it down. I would like to explore why we didn't get some other options from citizens who are developers in this area, or maybe it's just the fact that I wasn't privy to some of those earlier conversations, because I wasn't here. And so I asked those questions, and they weren't, I didn't get all the answers I wanted. And I just wanted to state that for the record, that I'm, my vote's going to reflect that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
I understand your concerns, Counselor Anker. I, I think voting on, voting to approve this location right now, since it is, since it is already our property, that some of those things that you're concerned about can still come out before any demolition or any construction happens. And so I don't have quite as much of a problem voting to approve this since it is our property and we have a little bit more leeway than if it were owned by something else, somebody else.
I'm sorry? You want to turn, hit your light on? All right, yes sir.
Can I just ask the question then about the property? What we're doing is, is saying this is the site we're moving forward on. So we're going to, we're going to forward money towards engineering and doing more site prep work in order to study these options going forward, or is this a set deal now that we've chosen this?
I can explain it to you, but I'll probably just mess you up, I try.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, good morning, Mayor, members of council, Deputy City Manager, City Attorney. So this resolution would authorize the city to issue a notice to proceed to the consultants we already have under contract. So I don't remember the exact dates or the exact dollar amounts, but you know, I believe it's sometime in 2024, City Council authorized about two and a half million dollars with our architects that we have under contract to do space programming and planning as well as schematic design services for a potential new jail. So space planning and programming is a fancy way of figuring out what kind of spaces are in the jail, how many beds we need, what the support spaces look like. We've completed that with a lot of coordination with the sheriff and his team. And then schematic design is, we would, in construction, normally think that would be about 30, 35% design level for a project, so nowhere near being able to build off of those plans, but enough of detail that contractors can pick those plans up and do some pricing. So essentially, we've studied a lot of different options for the sites over the last couple of years. You know, the sheriff really felt it was necessary that the jail be located pretty close to the courthouse for means, you know, transportation and those things. This is, again, city-owned property was one of the reasons that we, you know, looked at this site. We have spent a couple hundred thousand dollars already on this site doing some test fits, doing some geotechnical testing and all that. But if this resolution is approved, the design consultant would be authorized to start the schematic design process, which would be further engineering study, you know, figure out how the utilities can come to this site, figure out where we would have to relocate those departments that are on this site, and essentially spend the rest of their contract that we haven't spent to date, you know, developing what a potential jail could be at this location.
What, what would be the risk of holding out a little longer? I'm sorry, I keep asking these questions, but it is helping me learn, yeah.
So yeah, if it wasn't approved, you know, it's just extending the total timeframe out of the project, whatever this additional study of other potential locations, which again, when we started the process, we looked at the existing site, of course, how we could make a project work on that site. Of course, it would be multiple phases, it'd be a real long, long project on the existing site. We looked at a site more out in the county, so to speak, out on Chautauqua Road. Again, the sheriff didn't feel like that was a fit for his need. And then we tried to hone in on some, some pieces of property, you know, close to the courthouse. So if there was, you know, further need to study additional locations, you know, whatever that time period would be, would just be extending the overall timeline of the project.
Who's going to put together the cost of moving Public Works to a new location or multiple locations? These contractors that we're paying and engineers that we heard this good presentation from, I enjoyed it, I'm going to learn a lot fast. But those major questions weren't answered, you know, where we're going with, are, are the jail engineers and the people who are here going to be making a presentation on where these, these departments are being relocated to?
Yes, so, and there's, and I failed to mention them, there's a second contract that we have authorized with Gilbane Building Company, who's the construction manager for this proposed project. So they're working together with us and the designers from a construction standpoint as far as what the cost of the new facilities were. So part of this effort, if we were to proceed, would be to find potential locations and develop cost estimates for the uses that are currently on this property, which again is primarily Public Works, their office spaces here. The engineering department has the traffic shop, which is where we work on signs and traffic signals, and then we have record storage here. So all those functions, of course, would be wrapped up. And so if we came back, you know, after the first of the year with a total budget, total scope of the project, it would include expenses for those relocations.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I just want to say for the record, I'm all in favor of a new jail. I know we're going to spend the money. At this time, I'm going to vote differently probably than most people because I feel like a little time would do a little better, understanding the cost and how we're going to pay for it.
Thank you.
And that's where I am right now.
Okay. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I, I'm, I think I was one of the proponents that wanted you to bring the sheriff involved and, and keep him involved in this process. I did hear this week though, and I, it's something that I would like to raise to everybody's attention. Somebody said to me that the sheriff is the tenant in the jail. The jail belongs to the city of Columbus and we're the landlords. And I just want us all to be aware of that, because I think it makes sense to me. And so, yes, we need to get input from the sheriff as the tenant and as we, you know, possibly build out a, a property for him. But we do also have to keep in mind and keep our, our, an open mind that we might need to go in different directions. The, the study or the report that Toya was talking about earlier today, that NACO, I think they said things about mental health facilities in it. And if, if Toya's on the phone, maybe she can bring more attention to this than I can, more detailed. But I know a large portion of the jail was going to be designated for mental health. And we might want to see how that report is playing out because we might want to do a mental health facility separate from the jail instead of as part of the jail. Because that, from the brief information that I got from that, that's kind of the way they're heading in that direction. And so we might want to just listen to what's, what's happening in that report and take, and have an open mind and be able to pivot because things are changing. Thanks.
Counselor Kogel?
Director Pruitt, do we, this, this approval is just to proceed with the design, right? And do we need the design in order to get an idea of what our current, our overall cost is?
Yes, so we, you know, last meeting, we provided, you know, the estimate that was provided was really strictly based on conceptual plans and the contractor's historical knowledge of how much different components of a jail facility would cost. If we proceed here and we expend the rest of the design contract studying this location and further developing this location, again, we would end up with about 25% complete plans. You know, 100% would be construction documents that you could build off of. So this is still very conceptual, still very early. We don't have every plug in the wall figured out exactly where it would go. But again, it gets more specific as far as exactly how the building would be built, how big the foundations would be, would they be deep foundations, spread foundations? All those questions would get a little more defined than we have currently, which would give us a lot greater confidence in that budget number. We wouldn't have to carry as much contingency because in that number we provided last week was a, a big chunk of contingency, we would be reducing that number and really just have our arms around the total budget and scope and schedule a lot better than we do today.
Does that, um, does, is that a fluid design? Or does that kind of tie us in?
So yeah, so it could all be adjusted, you know, as more study, because again, you're only at 25%. So as you keep going down the line and get to 50%, 75%, you know, things change all the time. We saw that with the Judicial Center, we had an initial concept that we figured out was over budget. So as we keep moving down the line, yeah, it's totally subject to change, you know, if the numbers came back and we, we said, you know, we don't have this much budget, we got to look for a better way or a, not a better way, but a more economical way to provide some beds, you know, we want to go in a different direction. You know, at that time, you know, we could pivot and make that change.
What's the timeframe on the design?
So with the current contract, we planned on first quarter next year, you know, that would be complete, the design would be complete. And then the contractor would have time to do a good cost estimate on that. And then we would, you know, present that design and that cost estimate to council along with, you know, how it could be financed and how that part of it would look like. And then, you know, it'd be council's discretion on how we proceeded from there.
In the early part of the year, so you're saying?
Yes.
So, so if, if, what Counselor Crabbe was mentioned and what Counselor Tucker mentioned, if, if funding or, or services in regards to mental health came down, came closer to Columbus or gave us some options, that would give us a way to, or that would give us still the opportunity to pivot if we needed to?
Yes, yeah, we would totally be able to make, you know, adjustments. And the good thing about this proposed act too is it's a total of about 40 acres, you know, we're only identifying about 25 of it for a potential jail. So there is, you know, plenty of room if there were other city services that, you know, the, you know, some mental health things or whatever else we felt like needed to go out there in the future, there would be additional land and that could all be incorporated into the project.
Thank you. I just think, I, I think if we delay it anymore, I mean, all we're doing is just kind of kicking the can down the road of, and holding up our contractors, it sounds like, to provide us the design services that need us, that we need to be able to set a budget so that we can figure out where the funding is going to come from. So, I mean, I'm in, I'm, my vote is still registered as yes, so.
Okay.
And I do want to just clarify, it's not just design services, but also this is designating this as the site.
Right.
All right, Madam Clerk, did we vote on that? It seems like we had a little faulty. Okay, all right, well, we will, we have a motion and a second to approve. And if you would, can, can you put the screen up now or should we just do a voice vote? All right, is it not on yours that's not? All right, I'll tell you what, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of item two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed by like sign? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, Counselor Tucker.
All right, all opposed?
One.
Okay. All right.
Okay, item three and four are both grants for the sheriff's office.
Second.
Motion and second to approve items three and four. Any discussion on those two items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, they're approved.
Item three is the highway enforcement of aggressive traffic for 368,897 and there is no local match for that one. Item four is an operation Safe Walk and Ride Columbus for $79,400 and there is no local match for that one either. Okay, our purchases?
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the purchases A through E. Is there any one of those that someone would like pulled? All right, and all in favor of all of the purchases, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's, they're passed.
Okay, item A is the adoption of GDOT's procurement policies and they're just asking for a letter of agreement from the city. Item B is the vehicle build-out services for the sheriff's office vehicle for $55,000. Item C is the declaration of surplus equipment and of course, our auction will be September the 13th for that surplus. And item D is the declaration of surplus and recycling of various par, vehicle parts also for this auction. And item D is the intercom control system upgrade for MCP at 329,750. And that concludes my budget. I'm sorry, my agenda.
Your budget, okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the clerk's agenda, well, excuse me, before I go into that, I did want to state for the record that Counselor Tucker's vote was in favor of all the items on the city manager's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
On the clerk's agenda, the first item we have is a certificate of need application that was filed by the medical center and this is to provide services, excuse me, this is to provide open heart services. Item two is a notice for a public meeting. The community reinvestment department and CDAC are holding a joint meeting on Thursday, September 11th at 2:00 PM and they wanted to invite the council and the citizens. Item three is a request to declare the seats of Gloria Strode and Carolyn Starr Ross as vacant on the Liberty Theater and Cultural.
There's a motion second to declare those seats vacant. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Counselor Tucker's in favor as well.
Okay.
Items four and five are resolutions changing the meeting schedules for November and December of this year. We will now hold our November meetings on number, November 4th at 9:00 AM and to note, this will be at the Muskogee County School District building. Then November 18th at 5:30 PM. For December, the only meetings that will be held is December 9th at 9:00 AM and December 16th at 5:30 PM. And we just need a motion to approve these.
All right, motion second to approve the revised list of meeting dates. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, Counselor Crabbe?
On the public meeting, where is that going to be located? The one on September 11th?
That is, I do apologize, should have had that in front of me. That.
And next building, okay.
Yes, on the first floor conference room. Thank you, your pardon.
And then you said something, one of the meetings, we're meeting in the school?
Yes, ma'am, because the elections and registration office has the chamber reserved for November 4th.
Okay, so, and that was the 4th, November 4th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion to receive the minutes, is there a second? Motion second to receive the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Counselor Tucker's in favor as well. Item seven is an add-on, this is the resignation of John Sheftall. He's resigning from his position on the housing authority to accept his appointment to BHAR.
Motion second to receive that letter from a resignation from Mr. Sheftall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Counselor Tucker's in favor as well. And next, I'd like to ask for two add-on resolutions to excuse Counselor Davis and Huff from tonight's meeting.
All right, there's a motion second to excuse those absences. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Counselor Tucker's in favor as well. Next, we have board appointments. The first ones are the mayor's appointments and any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. We have the building authority of Columbus, there's a vacant position.
We're working on that one.
Yes, sir. Next, we have the Columbus Iron Works Convention and Trade Center Authority. Mr. Mayor is renominating John Stacy.
Second.
Motion second to approve Mr. Stacy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all, any opposed? All right, he's re-nominated, re-put in.
And he is also renominating the other two as well.
Fairer, all right, the motion second to confirm those two individuals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there are, all three of those are confirmed.
Counselor Tucker's in favor as well. For the convention and visitors board of commissioners, mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor is renominating Ms. Amy Bryan, she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Bryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I've got, I've spoken with the... Any opposed? Okay, and I've got, I've spoken with the, with Visit Columbus on the other two. I'll have those for the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Tucker was in favor of that confirmation as well. Then we've got the housing authority of Columbus, the seat of John Greeman. And Mr. Mayor, did you have a nomination for this one?
Yes, Gwen Ruff.
All right. Ms. Gwendolyn Ruff may be confirmed.
Second.
Motion, second to confirm Ms. Ruff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Counselor Tucker's in favor as well. Next, we have the pension fund employees board of trustees. There's a vacant seat for the business community rep.
Working on that one.
Thank you, sir. Item nine are council appointments that are ready for confirmation. We have three appointments for the downtown development authority, two for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, and one for the retirees' health benefits committee. They may be confirmed.
Confirmation.
Our motion, second to confirm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Confirmation is approved.
And Counselor Tucker's in favor as well. Next, we have council district seat appointments, and any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. For the civic center advisory board, the district eight seat is vacant. Then we have the community development advisory council. Districts two, six, and eight are all vacant. For the public safety advisory commission, we have the seat of Abdel Hernandez, Tracy Walton King, Paul Berry, Walter Taylor. They are all eligible to serve another term.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Sherri Carmack and Ricky Weeks, who are here. We just, we just confirmed them to serve, for Sherri to serve on the downtown development authority, and Ricky Weeks to serve on the retirees' health benefits committee. Thank you very much for volunteering to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor Crabbe. And I do apologize, for the public safety advisor commission, I should have acknowledged that Abdel Hernandez was district one, Tracy Walton King, district three, Paul Berry for district five, and Walter Taylor for district seven, and they are all eligible.
I have reached out to Paul Berry, but I haven't, I haven't got his name.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And for district nine, Scott Taft is not eligible to serve another term, so Counselor Anker, we will need a nominee for that seat. For the youth advisory council, mayor, excuse me, Counselor Crabbe is nominating Grayson Miley to serve...
Motion, second, well, there's a motion, it's a second to confirm. Motion, second to confirm Mr. Miley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Grayson Miley is a student at Brookstone, and will be representing district five. Next, we have council appointments, and nominations will be listed at the next meeting. For the board of honor, we've got Ms. Beth Harris, and she is interested in serving another term. Thank you, Counselor Crabbe. Next, we have the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, and the seat for the senatorial district 29 rep is vacant. For the Liberty Theater and Cultural Arts Center advisory board, Gloria Strode's seat is now vacant, so we can accept nominees for that seat.
I am working on a replacement for that.
Thank you, Counselor Crabbe. Mayor Protim has, is renominating Cletus Richardson, and Counselor Chambers is renominating Z. Lawrence Bryant. And they will be brought back at the next meeting. Then for the New Horizons Board, we have Judge Riney, who does not desire to be reappointed. And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we've got a couple of folks that requested their three minutes. First is Ms. Teresa Elamine.
I just want to make it clear that all of the nonprofits that are doing good work deserve to be funded. Philanthropy is really big business, billions. United Way International, billions. Goodwill Worldwide, billions. There is lots of funding for the kinds of good work that Mr. Broadwater talked about. Your job is to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. Taxpayer dollars being used for philanthropy is unusual. To have a permanent department to do that is unusual. What municipalities usually do if they have a project or a concern, they connect with a community foundation in their communities. Durham is doing just that. Right now, they get the Triangle Community Foundation to look at the application, because they're expert at metrics, what you're calling metrics. I call it measured outcomes. Are you really preventing crime? How can we measure that? That's what the ordinance says, scientific effective programs that stop and prevent crime. I read the ordinance. It reads beautifully and clearly. It's about results. We have crime, lots of crime. People are murdered, raped, assaulted, and robbed in this community. It's happening in neighborhoods. When I heard about what was being done in Oakland Park to try to stop some of the crime, that's how I came up with lifting up East Winton Number Seven. That's the inspiration for that, because crime happens in neighborhoods. And if you're not on the ground in the neighborhoods dealing with crime, you really can't be effective for the kind of crime that's going on in Columbus right now. People being murdered, people being murdered. So the good little girls and boys who are going to the programs that you're funding, they're the good little girls and boys. We need to deal with the knuckleheads out there that are committing the crimes. And you're ineffective on that score, you're just ineffective. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next, Mr. Broadwater, Dr. Broadwater Senior.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. You started that clock on me, okay. Now, I just got a text from Atlanta, said, "Don't go back to the mic, don't mess it up, you did a great job." So, but I'm trying not to mess it up, but I would say this. The funding that we received from you all, it means a lot. It matters. I was very proud tonight to see four Omega Lamp Lighters stand before you and, and, as they were sworn in to the youth advisory council. That means a lot to me. And thank you, ma'am. Madam Deputy, City Manager. I just want to, a couple of things I want to say in these next two minutes. You know, I had a mother approach me in a Publix, and she said, "Look, I need to get my son in an Omega Lamp Lighters." I said, "Yeah, ma'am, there's a process." She said, "I know," but she looked me in my eyes and said, "Look, the gang is going to get him." When you have a single mom that's working two jobs, that tells you the gangs are going to get her son, you feel compelled to interview that young man and put him in the program. And I can say he's, he's doing well. I had another mother to tell me that her son was struggling in school. And we have educators that are mentors, and we have a program where if they are struggling, all they have to do is say one word, but they also have to turn in their grades. We take these young men to church once a quarter. That's important. And I heard Ms. Elamine talk about the bad element, but to me, that's what's missing with the bad element, taking them to church. You know, the Bible talks about teach a child, and they won't go away, they won't stray away from it. I don't know the exact quote, but they won't stray away from it. I just want to say in these next 49 seconds, I mean, the police chief has talked to these young men, judges, pastors, doctors, lawyers, so they have great examples. But I won't call these names here, and a lot of you know these names, because if it wasn't for these names, wouldn't be no Marvin Broadwater Senior. He might be in Atlanta working or serving. Robert L. Anderson, Ben Watson Senior, Mr. Eddie Roberts, Charles Alexander. All of them took me to the side and said, "Look, you're needed here. Your leadership is needed here." So as long as I live, for the rest of my life, I will try to do what I do and continue to do that. But I do want to say tonight, thank you very much for what you do. It ain't easy, and I know it. You know, we've had some disagreements, but it ain't easy. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. All right, we have had a request to go into executive session to discuss land acquisition and disposal and litigation. All right, there's a motion, second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
All right, we have been in executive session discussing the acquisition, disposal of real estate, as well as litigation. No votes were taken. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, let me make two quick comments. One, just in an effort to keep people updated, the search for the city manager, about 10 days ago, we did a, I sat in just as a silent viewer and observer, but Mercer, the Mercer Group did hold a open discussion with about 23 individuals. So council got all of their people there. They were all appointed by members of council. I thought it went well, but more importantly, by all accounts that we heard from the people that participated, they thought it went exceptionally well. So the next, we actually fell two days behind. We should have gotten the marketing materials out two days ago, but they went out today. So you'll see those out on a number of different publications, and the job opening has been posted. And we'll keep you posted on any changes, whatever happens with it as we go forward. And lastly, and probably most importantly, related happy birthday to Walker from yesterday. Now I let her, now you've got a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.